I'd like to call to order the Housing Authority Meeting of March 18th, 2025. Roll call.
Agency members, Rios.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Vice Chair Perez.
Here.
And Chair Ayala.
Here. Let me see. Do we have speak cards for this, uh, for the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
I don't have any.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Agency members, Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Chair Perez.
Aye.
Chair Ayala.
Aye.
Do we have a Community Development Director's report?
No report.
Thank you. I have no cards for oral communications. So I'll be adjourning in the Housing Authority. Move on to, uh, huh? Pardon me? Oh, okay. We ready? CAD, like to call the regular meeting of Norwalk City Council to order. Invocation and pledge. This evening, we're honored to have Pastor April Ruder from Prey Norwalk Church leading the invocation. Pastor Ruder has been serving and teaching for over thirty years in Norwalk, seeing the faith from children when they ask God for big things and anticipate His answers. Definitely inspires her. Following Pastor April's invocation, we have eleven-year-old resident Rosalie Ramirez from New Harvest Christian School who will lead us in the flag salute. Rosalie loves to play volleyball for the city of Norwalk and enjoys taking piano lessons. Following the pledge, I'd like to have Pastor Ruder and Rosalie to come forward so we can take a picture with Council. You're on.
All right, wonderful. Okay. Well, let's pray. Father God, we invite you into this room tonight, and I think of the verse in Jeremiah twenty-nine seven that says, "Pray for the peace and prosperity of the city. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." We pray that over ourselves, over our city, God, I think of every person in this room that's a director of a certain area of the city. God, we pray your blessing, your wisdom over them. God, we pray your favor over finances. Yeah, over agendas, over strategy. Lord, I pray for our city council members. I pray your blessing, your, um, your wisdom and agreement on the essentials, God, and just, yeah, just use them, Lord, as their, as their leading. Lord, we pray exceptional leadership over them. And also, I pray over, um, as Captain Conti shared, over robberies. God, we're just canceling out all the robberies or any, any theft in our city, God. We pray safe streets, um, everywhere, all over the city, God. And tonight, we just thank you for being with us, for leading us, and we just commit this evening to you. And thank you for all that you do for us. You're so good. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can everyone take two steps to the left, please?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Glassman, can I have the, uh, closed session report, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council convened for closed session, and prior to recessing to closed session, the four items that were listed on the agenda were announced. The record should further reflect that all council members who were present tonight were in closed session, with the exception of Councilmember Ramirez. That, uh, the city council was able to address a few of the items, but not all of them. Items three and four were discussed. No action was taken on either one of those. The council began the conversation on item number one, but we will be recessing back into closed session to further discuss, uh, items one and two, and if there's anything left to discuss on item three. With that, uh, that was my report from closed session.
Thank you. City council comments, uh, Councilmember Rios.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening, and, uh, I would just like to ask that we have a moment of silence for fallen Deputy Hector Cuevas, who passed in the line of duty, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, March seventeenth. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence for this first responder law enforcement officer who unfortunately, uh, lost his life and passed on. Thank you. That's all we have.
Uh, Councilmember Valencia?
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I want to report on. The Norwalk Little League and the Norwalk Pony. At, uh, Norwalk Little League was at, um, Corvallis Middle School. That was not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before. Very great, wonderful event, lots of vendors, um, lots of great energy, and just seeing those little ones in their little outfits is amazing. And, and just, it was wonderful to be there and as well as my colleagues. And then, right after, Norwalk Pony at Hollyfield, that was a lot of fun as well, with a lot of banners, some of them made their own banners. And, uh, so I just want to wish them, and then I couldn't make it this past Saturday to, um, to Lakeside and, um, the one, and the girls' fast pitch. I couldn't make it there, but I just want to wish them all a great season. I know they're gonna do fantastic and just know that we're very supportive of them. And we are going to, an open invitation to my colleagues, um, because Monique Yanez and I have an agreement that we are going to have a pizza party for the banner winners for the girls', um, fast pitch. So we'll be doing that. Mayor and colleagues, I also wanted to mention that, um, to ask that we close in memory of a very dear friend of mine and a friend of many as well. Mr. Gabriel, um, we called him Gabe, P. Garcia, uh, passed recently, and I don't know if this is the time to read about him? Okay, thank you. He was a planning commissioner for Norwalk, my planning commissioner, and just my dear friend. Gabe Garcia, and I'll read. We're adjourning in, in memory of former, um, La Marada mayor and former La Marada council member, Gabe Garcia, uh, who passed away a few short weeks ago. He was on the city council from La Marada of two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, and he served as mayor in two thousand twelve, uh, two thousand twelve, thirteen year. He previously served as city planning commissioner, and he and I met while we served at the Norwalk La Marada School Board. He served there for many years, and he served them very well. He was a community service, uh, professional and an ardent supporter of sports, and he was the LA Dodgers probably number one or two or three fan. I know your dad is probably up there as well. But he always, um, attended youth and professional sports. He loved to support, and he was a man of service. A celeb, uh, I wanted to also add that he was our Norwalk resident where he grew up. He was on the planning commission from April seventh, two thousand twenty, through June twenty-eighth, through thousand, two thousand twenty-four. He served on the Board of Education in Norwalk, uh, La Marada from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand five. La Marada City Council, two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. He retired from so many jobs that he's had, and you know that he got his dream job. He loves Hawaii, he loved Hawaii, and he would always go whenever he got a chance to go on vacation. So he currently lived in Hawaii, working, he got a job doing what he loves doing, is working with the city, um, in Maui, I believe. And then just, you know, working over there and living over there. Fantastic. So he lived a full life. As, um, was mentioned, he's a huge Dodger fan and Rams and all kinds of other sports, but Dodgers, Dodger blue, blood Dodger blue. He was a beloved father and grandfather uncle, and definitely a great friend. And we're going to mourn his passing, we miss him very much. I wanted to also mention that he, uh, there will be a Celebration of Life, um, event held at the, uh, Town Center Hall in Santa Fe Springs next Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, at ten AM. And I just wanted to add our hearts are with Gabe's friends and family at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, I do want to share that the newsletters are out, um, for our various departments in the city. The ones I have in my hand today are for the senior center and for social services, so please make sure you pick them up. There's lots of great information in there. I know that our Norwalk Now did reach all of our homes and businesses. It talks about all of the great events and items going on here in the city. Just a few things that I was able to do, um, over the past couple of weeks. A huge thank you to the Norwalk Educational Alliance, um, partners between the chamber businesses, the city, our Sridos College, um, Selco Web. We hold, um, mock interviews every single year for our juniors and seniors to come and really practice interviewing for jobs, so they can prepare themselves for real life. It's something that I try to do each and every year, and, um, again, Karen, thank you for spearheading it with our team. I really do believe it's a great, um, asset that we're, a, a great tool that we're giving back to our students. That very next day, we were able to attend the Norwalk Chambers Women's Leadership Breakfast. We had a group of about sixty to seventy women and young women students with us having breakfast. We had four amazing speakers, um, that just covered what it's like to be in leadership and be a woman and building on the powers that you have around you. So Karen, thank you for bringing that back. It was an honor to be there with all of you and in sharing some stories. We also had the baseball opening days. It is officially baseball season. Spring will be here in a couple of days. You all know how I feel about baseball. So congratulations to all of our athletes who are out there on the field. Parents, thank you for everything that you do. Volunteers and coaches for really giving our, our youth this opportunity to play the game that they love. I attended the county, um, Economic Regional Housing Authority meeting last week, um, where, together with a lot of my colleagues, we are fighting, um, to ensure that our cities in the entire county have the best responsibility and the use of measure each funding. So that meeting continues, um, a lot. It's a lot to go through, but, but we're doing what is best for our cities. We did have Artastic, I'm sure the mayor will talk about this. Also, we attended Artastic on Friday. So many people were there. It was a great event. It was almost in every single inch of the arts and sports complex and the cultural arts center. There was so many families there, and then throughout the weekend, I ran into families in the city who were there and absolutely loved it. And one of the highlights that I heard over the weekend was for our cultural arts center and our youth preschool programs. They absolutely loved going into the classroom, seeing their photos, seeing their artwork. It was just, it was really great to be able to share that with our entire community. So please, Sonia, Park and Recreation, um, Public Services, Public Safety, everybody that was there, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our artists that won awards and scholarships. It was definitely a great day, um, for our city. And finally, yesterday, I got to spend, um, about an hour or so with April and her class, um, at Edmiston Elementary, where I was able to, um, come to the school, spend some time with the students, and read with them. We talked about St. Patrick's Day and the luck of the Irish, and hopefully, I did see a rainbow yesterday. So hopefully, they were able to catch a little bit of that rainbow and, and get some special Irish luck yesterday during St. Patrick's Day. So I know that was a lot. We have a lot on our agenda, but a lot is always happening in our city, and I'm very grateful to be able to share that with, with all of our residents and community members. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Just to, uh, echo a couple of things, my colleague said I want to thank and congratulate the Recreation Department for Artastic. It was really outstanding. You know, the Norwalk programs, they're always different every year. There's, they're always better every year, and that's kind of a standard that it's been Norwalk for many, many years. But, and Public Safety and all the support departments to make that happen, but it was, I know you had to change locations in about twenty-four hours' notice, and I know that was a trick. So congratulations, and be sure to thank the staff, because they really did an outstanding job. Yeah, also, kudos to, uh, to Karen. I participated in the mock interviews, uh, this year, and, and, you know, the five youngsters that I met were, they're really, really outstanding when you, you know, you get a chance to talk to them and you see how smart they are, and, uh, the, the aspirations they have. I had, I interviewed two kids, and both of them were physics majors. You know, I mean, you get a little bit, and one was wanting to be a, a, a graphic artist, so it's, it's like a little bit of everything. And, uh, it's, it's really a great experience, because it really gives you an idea of the high-quality students that we have in our schools, and I know it probably wouldn't happen if it wasn't for you. So thank you very much. At this time, uh, city council is going to proclaim March twenty-first as World Down Syndrome Day in the city of Norwalk. Tonight, we recognize March twenty-one as World Down Syndrome Day to raise awareness, promote inclusion, and celebrate the contributions of individuals with Down Syndrome in our community. We acknowledge the importance of fostering a society where every individual is valued, respected, and given opportunities to thrive. Before we invite the proclamation recipients up to the front, uh, staff, can you please, uh, play the short video that we have prepared?
Today, the city of Norwalk joins communities around the world in recognizing World Down Syndrome Day on March twenty-first. It's a day to celebrate the abilities, talents, and unique contributions of individuals with Down Syndrome. In Norwalk, we believe in ensuring every resident has the opportunity to thrive. Together, we are a stronger, more connected community.
Now, let's, uh, let's have the Recreation Department team and the adaptive recreation families come up to receive the proclamation and snap a couple of photos.
So I would have you stand on that piece of tape right there, please, and I will have you on this piece of tape, please.
You finally took my advice, didn't you?
All right, so we'll have, um...
I think we probably ought to stand up.
She's, she joined?
Yeah, she's playing, uh, with a league or something.
She made a goal last night, so bad.
No, no. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Yeah?
Okay, we have a proclamation today. It starts, "Whereas World Down Syndrome Day is an opportunity to raise awareness about what Down Syndrome is, and emphasizes the importance of valuing individuals with Down Syndrome in their communities. And whereas World Down Syndrome Day symbolizes the twenty-first day of the third month, which was selected to signify the tripification of the twenty-first chromosome, which is Down Syndrome. And whereas General Assembly declared World Down Syndrome Day, March twenty-first and December twenty-eleven, aiming to raise public awareness, and inviting all member states, relevant organizations, civil society, and the private sector to observe this day appropriately. Now, therefore, I, Tony Oliver, Mayor of the city of Norwalk, on behalf of Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez, my fellow council members, Rick Ramirez, Margarita Rios, and Valencia, do hereby proclaim March twenty-first as World Down Syndrome Day. And the city of Norwalk encourages subservience by appropriate activities, programs, and ceremonies." Okay, at this time, we will have, uh, city manager comments. Mr. Gomez, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of city council, and those that join us here in our, um, council chambers and out in our, uh, community. Tonight, uh, first thing I'd like to do is introduce a new staff member to our, um, uh, addition of, uh, employees. She is a building and safety manager, and I'll have, um, Mr. Alex Hamilton introduce her.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Fay Wan, who is our new building, if she, you could please stand, Fay. She's our new building manager, a building official. Just very briefly, this has been an arduous process. The key for us was not only the qualifications and the certifications, but the fit for this organization and the city, and it's taken us a while, but we've got a great candidate. Fay comes to us as an ICC certified, uh, among many other credentials. She's, uh, credentialed in all levels of, uh, inspection, from residential to commercial and the trades. She also has what we call a CASP cert, which is an ADA compliance certification. So we look forward to her being, well, want to welcome her to the team, and we're very happy that she's here, and I know she can immediately add value to the department and bring a level of technical expertise to this city that we deserve and, and we could definitely use. So Fay, I want to thank you.
Welcome to the team. Next, we have a guest, Hector De La Torre, who is the Executive Director for the Gateway Cities Council of Governments, and would like to, uh, speak to us, uh, the council, the community, and, uh, Hector, welcome.
Thank you. It's great to come back. Uh, I was here last year and just to say hi. This time, I'm bearing gifts. We, uh, the, the Gateway Cities, for those of you that don't know, are the twenty-seven cities and eleven unincorporated areas in southeast Los Angeles County. We are over two million residents together. If we were one city, and I'm not saying we should be, uh, we would be the fifth-largest city in America. If we were one state, we would be the thirty-eighth-largest state in America, and yet, we're just a little piece of LA County. So, uh, we, we do things collectively, uh, transportation, housing and homelessness. We do, uh, economic development, we do health and wellness, and the reason I'm here today, we also do environmental, uh, stuff together. And so there is a program called the Energy, uh, it's called REN, the Regional Energy Network, and as part of that, every year, we give awards to the cities that are the, pursuing the most sustainable practices, projects within the city. And so this year, Norwalk is a gold medal winner, uh, for that, yes. These are called the Energy Action Awards, and we've been doing this, and we started the program in twenty-twenty-one. All of the Gateway Cities are part of this. All of the Gateway Cities are part of this program. Everyone participates. But not everyone wins. Only the better cities, some of your neighbors didn't win. Only the better cities who've been really focused on sustainability are able to win. So in fact, this year, 23 of 26 cities won some kind of award. They didn't all win. Only seven got gold. So with that, there is a video that I. Hi, I'm Hector De La Torre, and I'm the Executive Director of the Gateway Cities Council of Governments. It is my pleasure to recognize the 23 cities out of 27 that have received the 2024 Gateway Cities Energy Action Awards. These awards recognize efforts to make each city more energy efficient and sustainable. The record-high 23 Gateway Cities have achieved bronze, silver, and gold levels through their year-long efforts, including one city that has reached the first-ever Platinum Gateway Cities Energy Action Award. Let's recognize those cities now.
The city of Artigia installed a new cool roof at the Albert O'Leary Community Center.
The city of Bell Gardens upgraded its lightings at Ford Park to LEDs.
The city of Mewood upgraded their fleet to electric trucks.
The city of Norwalk recently replaced an older-aged transformer with the powersmiths. This low voltage design meets our common goal of minimizing energy waste.
The city of Signal Hill hosted a Centennial Street Tree Planting Event at Reservoir Park, where the community came out and planted 14 street trees.
The city of Whittier replaced five water heaters with energy-efficient heat pumps. Projects like this align with the city of Whittier's sustainability goals and offer cost savings to the residents.
And now, I'm happy to recognize Pico Rivera as the first city to achieve the Platinum Award by completing the highest level of activities to save money and increase the city's energy efficiency and sustainability. Congratulations, Pico Rivera.
The city of Pico Rivera pursued energy efficiency conservation block ramp plans from the U.S. Department of Energy to develop its first-ever climate action and adaptation plan, which will allow the city to implement new programs, projects, and initiatives that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions for our community.
Pico Rivera also helps their residents become more energy efficient by providing solar power, Tesla battery backup, and long-term energy savings with no upfront costs.
Congratulations to Pico Rivera and to all of the recipients of the 2024 Gateway Cities Energy Action Awards. As you may have noticed, neither Downey, nor Cerritos, nor La Mirada got gold awards. So just saying. So we jumped from two to 12 silver winners last year. Like I mentioned, there's seven gold, including Norwalk. The platinum was not a thing. We made it up because Pico Rivera did so much. In this year, we felt we had to recognize them. So now we've set a higher bar beyond gold for cities like Norwalk to step it up for next year. Very important that we're not, we're not just doing it to do it, right? It saves money, these things are more efficient, and so they save the city money, save the taxpayers money. And then also, because of the nature of where we are, we're very polluted with the freeway traffic and all the things we have around here. It's very important that the cities set the example on clean energy for the functioning of the city. So we're very, very proud of this program. We're so glad that all the cities are participating, some better than others. And we will keep nudging you and pushing you and giving you ideas of things that are available. Most of the things you saw were funded by the county or by the state. And so they're either low cost or free to the cities to do these conversions. So again, thank you. Congratulations.
And Hector, just to let you know, we're preparing for platinum for next year. All the construction is happening now.
That's the goal.
And if I may, just real quick, a lot of the things that were announced there that other cities are doing or have done, in the city of Norwalk, we've been at the forefront when it has to do with sustainability and meeting, you know, our goal number four. And so when it comes to the LED lighting, you know, the electric vehicles, the EV charging stations, I mean, Norwalk has done all of that already. So I just, I mean, I may be a little biased, but we're really at the forefront of this, you know, sustainability and our environmental protection. So I'm really proud of the work that staff in the city is doing.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is the Norwalk Education Alliance Mock Interview 2025 recap video.
On March 6th, the city of Norwalk and the Norwalk Education Alliance teamed up to host mock interviews for local high school students.
I think this event's really important, and I have a greater appreciation for it since I've been in there. I spoke to some remarkably intelligent people today, and they're from our community. And that's why we're all here, and we want to see them be successful. Because when any one of our residents succeeds, we all succeed.
This is for our high school students to partner with our business community, our Chamber of Commerce, and our community college to really find the best skills possible to go into the workforce and the next steps in their careers.
We are preparing our youth for the future, for the real world. They have a chance to talk about their future, answer questions that prepares them for their career.
Today, we're here for those students and getting them ready for the future. They are our future, and Norwalk La Mirada, along with the city of Norwalk, are making a difference.
This event gave students a chance to gain real-world interview experience, helping them build confidence and prepare for their future careers.
Right now, I'm feeling pretty good about the interview. I have also done the interview in the past, last year.
Last year, I was a little bit nervous, but I think this year, I'm a little more prepared since I got a little more practice and a little more of the advance from getting feedback from last year's. But I think this year will be better.
I've done my mock interview today, and it was a great experience. And it really helped me be able to know and what to expect for the future.
It went better than what I expected. They said I had good speaking skills and good posture. So in my opinion, I feel like I did better than what I thought I would have been.
Today, I attended my mock interview, and I learned that it is very helpful to be authentic and to be yourself.
It went pretty well. I had really good speaking skills and overall, just really good communication as well.
So this is just a great chance for students to practice, to get them ready, and to have a few run-throughs before the real-life experience.
A huge thank you to everyone who helped make this event a success, including our Recreation and Park Services Department. Your support made a real impact on our youth, shaping the next generation of professionals.
Our future leaders here in Norwalk. Next, we have the bi-weekly video for our community to see and hopefully join us in our next events.
On March 7th, Patterson Elementary School students took a field trip to Norwalk City Hall. The students had the opportunity to visit many departments in City Hall. Our future leaders had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Tony Ayala and gain insight into how the city operates. In preparation for the Special Olympics, the Norwalk team started their practice at the Norwalk High School Football Field on Saturday, the 8th. Mayor Tony Ayala was in attendance to encourage and support the Norwalk athletes. On March 13th, the Norwalk Senior Center hosted the St. Patrick's Lucky Charm Mixer. It was a festive celebration with music, dancing, and exciting raffle prizes. Seniors enjoyed a shamrock and good time, bringing the luck of the Irish to life. The city of Norwalk's annual artistic event was held on March 14th. Hosted by the Recreation and Park Services Department, this arts festival included a student art exhibit, book fair, live art demos, arts and crafts, artwork vendors, and entertainment.
Mayor, members of the city council, that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Before we get into the consent calendar, there's a couple of housekeeping things we got to do here. We have a police note that on item four, recommended action for a contract RJ Noble Company was originally $715,016, or $16,42. The actual number is $613,000. And 613 and $748. So that correction. And then we have Mr. Tisdale, you want to speak on item four and five, I believe?
Good evening, council and staff. Item number four is for Excelsior Drive. There is a strip of asphalt that's around the median parkway on Excelsior Drive. It's, I sent photos to you guys earlier tonight in your emails. Is that going to be repaired as part of this as well? It's asphalt, it's got a lot of chips, it's actually worse than the actual roadway, and it's got paint all over it. If it's not going to be repaired, maybe we don't need it and we can remove it, which is something I've been speaking about before. And then item number five. The agenda's come out with little time for people who work. Item number five is for the Firestone Project. The agenda attachment is a Google Map photo with a blue line. If you go onto the city website and search all of this stuff, it's really hard to do that. It's another image of Google Maps with a blue line. So I'm not sure what all that money's going to. But if I was in your position, I would reject it until you got more information about what that's actually for. So, speaking as a community member, it would be awesome if we had more information about what's being done and what's being built, specifically blueprints, I'm sure there's permits and stuff like that. So that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Your comments are noted, and I'm sure the staff will address that, and if need be, can contact with you. Consent calendar, you have a request, Margarita?
Yes, before we move on to consent, I'd like to request that we pull item number eight for a staff report.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, I have some slides regarding item number eight that I'd like to go over. Tonight, the request before you is a temporary lease extension agreement with the Norwalk Auto Auction. Since September 1st, 1985 Acquire Corp. has leased the property at 12405 Rosecrans, known as the Norwalk Auto Auction from the city. The city has been in active negotiations with Acquire Corp. to enter into an amendment to the lease agreement pursuant to the terms presented to the city council on December 3rd, 2024. Negotiations regarding this third amendment have taken longer than expected. Per the second amendment, corrections were mandated to address property needs. Corrections included vital landscaping, building, and perimeter wall alterations. The fiscal impact of this is set by the lease, which mandates a certain monthly base rent based on the level of improvement that they achieve with the property. Per the term of this agreement, the third amendment will maintain the rental income at a monthly base rent of $71,776.58. The fiscal impact of the long-term extension will be determined upon completions of negotiations with Acquire Corp. At this time, staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a new third amendment with Acquire Corp. to temporarily extend the terms of the current lease agreement in a term or in a form approved by the city attorney's office and continue negotiating terms for a long-term ground lease extension. The recommendation is that the third amendment would take us through August of this year, I believe. And that's the direction that's being sought from city council.
Is that all, Alex?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I'll be more than happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, the reason that this has come to my attention is because it is, it is a lease between the Auto Auction and the city of Norwalk, which generates monthly income for us. Every month, there's rent as per the lease that's due to the city. And of course, that's a positive because it contributes to our general fund, correct? And, yes.
Yes.
And so, I mean, in a year's time, for example, I mean, how much income or amount are we talking about is added to the budget based on the lease with this contract?
About approximately $861,000 per year.
So the reason I wanted a bit more information is because I would like to hope that we're really making progress to move forward because I would like assurances that we are going to renew this lease. The sooner the better because I'm looking at, it generates revenue for the city. And I know that they've leased with the city for how many years now?
Since the 1980s, late 1980s.
Have they ever missed a payment?
I can't speak to that. I don't know if our finance director can at this point.
They're paid up with all the rent.
Okay, so they pay on time. They're, in my opinion, a good business partner to have, especially because they generate revenue for the city. I know that there was information that I requested because I wanted to be as prepared as possible. And unfortunately, I didn't get that until 3:30 this afternoon. That doesn't really give me a whole lot of time to review the item in order for me to be completely informed. of time to review the item in order for me to be completely informed on why we continue to request an extension. I know we've given them several extensions. So I'm just wondering, Alex, um, thinking out of the box, has there been any other ideas, suggestions on how we can honor the terms of this lease, um, at their, their request, uh, for a lease and not just an extension, and still, um, ensure that whatever issues still need to be remedied, are taken care of? Are there any issues that were pending that have been taken care of as part of previous amendments to the, to the lease?
So, council member, uh, thank you for that question. Obviously, recognize a substantial source of income to the city, but also recognize their obligation to the city. Uh, we're the landlord, and we've been engaged with them, uh, on a number of property maintenance-related issues, uh, which is information we did provide you. We're hoping that we're, I think both parties are making a good faith effort to close this up sooner rather than later, but it is contingent upon them bringing certain structures on that property up to code, which we'd expect as a landlord of anyone that would be leasing from the city. But we're making good progress on that.
Yes. No, I, I, I agree with that 100%, as far as them being good tenants. Now, the, um, improvements or issues that need to be addressed, um, it's my understanding that they're on city property?
A portion of the site is located on city property. Yes, that's correct.
So what, what is, what is the tenant's options on those, making those type of repairs or, um, fixes or alterations? Um, what are they, I'm just curious what they're, they're responsible for, considering it's on city property? How do we negotiate that?
Thank you, council member. Uh, the lease, the original, uh, ground lease itself with the city required that they maintain the city facilities in good working order. Unfortunately, some of the buildings look like they've fallen into disrepair, so that's what we're working with them on. Uh, we've subsequently learned that they were using some of the buildings for, you know, that really shouldn't be occupied at this point, so we're trying to remedy that situation to create a, a more safe situation for the use of all their buildings. They're actively in plan check for improvements to the buildings, and again, it's an ongoing dialogue and discussion, but we're trying to find collaborative solutions with them.
Okay, so the rationale for the extension then is, um, break it down for me, like in a sentence or two. What's the, the request?
If I may?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios, uh, we've had, um, discussions, uh, since 20, I think, 2020, um, with repairs. They have not completed those. Um, so it's been five years since we've tried to help them complete those repairs. Um, and that was a previous amendment. Uh, we are now looking at additional repairs, and so, uh, it's been delayed, um, on the, uh, tenants', um, part. Uh, we don't know why. Um, they're not, they haven't been major up until this point. And so, um, a time to negotiate a term in a timeline to repair what's existing, uh, would be appropriate, uh, from staff's recommendation.
Okay. Have, have they complete, I know, so, thank you, Jesus. Um, so, from 2020, have they made any, um, corrections? Uh, have they remedied any of their, uh, amendment? I'll just refer to it as required under the amendments?
Yes. One of the requirements was a dilapidated fence that divided, um, the, um, condominiums in the property, and they've completed that.
So that, that's a positive. That's something that we're taking into consideration as far as our compliance?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, in order to, Alex, as, thank you, Jesus, as you mentioned, in order to kinda try to track this forward, um, what are we doing to ensure we stay on track? We're communicating with Auto Auction, where, you know, they know what they're required to do? I mean, what, so that we can move this along?
We're in the process of doing that. We've had, uh, inspections of the site. We've identified areas where deficiencies exist. Uh, we are requesting a work plan from them and a schedule, but we'll work collaboratively with them. As I said, one of the buildings, uh, is in plan check as we speak. There's other improvements that need to be done. So what I would recommend is just what we're doing, which is more of a close coordination and dialogue, but interdepartmental, working very closely with public safety, deputy city manager, city manager, and communicating, uh, all the deficiencies that we know to them in a timely manner, but getting back from them a commitment and a work plan and a schedule as to how they're gonna address it and when they're gonna address it.
Right. Is there a request from them on a term of release?
Yes. Uh, their request is for a five-year lease with a five-year extension.
Okay. Do we know, do we have any information on that, or is that something that?
We're not prepared to recommend that.
Okay. So, um, again, I just, thank you so much for, for that explanation, and, and I, I, I do appreciate, um, the information. Um, what I would ask is if there's something additional attached to, uh, an agenda item, that I receive it, or anyone on the council receives it in advance, so that we have a chance to review. An hour and a half before meeting isn't really reasonable, considering our busy schedules, but thank you so much. Um, and again, my, my point was the fact that they are a tenant that produces revenue for our city. And they are a business. Uh, we have many businesses in the City of Norwalk. I'd like to make sure that we hold them all to the same standard. If it's landscape, everybody's gotta take care of their landscape. If it's the front of the building, the facade, you take care of that facade in the front of that building. Equitable for all businesses in our city. Not just one or two, everybody. We're gonna set a standard. We set it for every business in this city. So, um, I, I appreciate that report. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I, I have one question, and thank you for pulling the item. Margarita actually wanted to add something to the, the three-month extension. Um, when you do come back, I know in 2021, when we did the extension the first time, there was a list of items that we requested be fixed. Um, so when you come back in August, can we please have that list, um, detailed, and then also which ones were actually completed? And then what I would also like to see is, um, a study, a lease study on the city-owned property and the dollar amount for that lease amount, um, and compare it to what the market rate is going for at that particular location, that size, et cetera. Um, I wanna make sure that, you know, if we are looking at continuing, um, this contract, that the city is getting the market rate for that particular property.
Thank you.
Okay, given the, uh, given the correction to item four, um, do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move it.
Second. Ready for roll call? Councilmembers Rios?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala?
Aye.
Does, uh, council have any appointments this evening?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I've got one too.
Is Erica here? Uh, I'd like to reappoint Erica Hidalgo to the Historical Heritage Commission, and I'd like to appoint Brandon Obi to the Youth Commission. That's my motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you.
Do I add my appointment to that, or do we, uh, do them separately?
Okay, so for our, um, first nominations, um, a reappointment of Erica Hidalgo to Historical Heritage and Brandon Obi to the Youth Commission. Uh, councilmembers Rios?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala?
Aye. I would like to appoint, uh, Steve Garcia to the, uh, Community Promotion Commission. I believe he's here.
I'll second. Okay. Councilmembers Rios?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala?
Aye.
Uh, if, oh, there he is. Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the oath. It's there, you can follow along with me. If you would please, um, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Steve Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For item 10, we have a public hearing. Uh, now it's time for public hearing to consider 2025 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025-26 Annual Action Plan. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Boyd, please provide the noticing report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. Notice of the item was posted on February 27th. It was also published in the Norwalk Patriot and the Norwalk, uh, La Abignon on February 28th, and the plan will be available in the Community Development Office from, uh, March 25th through April 25th. Uh, I don't have any speaker cards for that item.
Hold on, I may. Yeah, I do have.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I do have one speaker, sorry. If you wanna hear the staff report and then, um...
Yeah, that's what we'll do. Melanie, you will, uh, staff will give us a report on the item, and then you can, uh, testify at that point. Uh, staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable, sorry, City Manager. I've been preparing for this. Uh, no, I, Honorable Mayor and City Council, uh, tonight before you is a public hearing item, which is the five-year consolidated plan 2025 to 2030, and also the annual action plan 2025-26. This presentation will be given in two parts. Um, to my right is Monica Trancoso from M&amp;S. Uh, she's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on the outreach and the preparation of this plan, done a lot of really good work. Uh, for a point of order, uh, she has experience with these plans in numerous jurisdictions, and has experience also with Norwalk, so she knows the community well. So I would like to turn it over to her, and she'll run through some slides for you, and then I'll finish up with the annual action plan.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Um, so the item before you this evening, as, um, our interim city director mentioned, is the presentation of the consolidated plan and annual action plan. So mainly, it's, uh, part of the Citizen Participation Plan of the City of Norwalk, that a public hearing be held in the preparation of these plans. The consolidated plan, as mentioned, is a five-year plan, and the action plan is an annual plan. Um, the items we will cover is, um, the HUD requirements, the purpose of the plans, how the needs assessments were derived, the various goals of the plan, and next steps. So, as many of you know, the City of Norwalk is considered an entitlement jurisdiction, which means that it has a population that exceeds 50,000. As such, it receives federal funding directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. And the goals or the mission of these funds are to dedicate them to improving housing conditions throughout the community, and to address community needs specifically for low and moderate-income families. The funds that you receive are considered community development block grant funds and home funds. Um, these are formula grant funds that help improve, um, not only living conditions, but expand economic opportunities, um, in addition to, um, making the community sustainable, again, for low and moderate-income people. And the home funds are more specific for housing affordability and livability of those housing units. Um, it includes, um, rehabilitation and home buyer assistance as well, as eligible programs. The consolidated plan process is a requirement, as I mentioned, from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um, and, uh, one of those requirements, of course, is, um, the five-year consolidated plan. Um, the last one covered the period from 2020 to 2025, and the new, um, consolidated plan period would start July 1st, 2025, and go through June 30th, 2030. So, um, in the process of developing the consolidated plan, um, there was, uh, a lot of community outreach. As I mentioned, the Citizen Participation Plan is like the Community Engagement Plan, very specific to the city, that also aligns with HUD regulations. Um, so in creating the plan, um, much of the affordable housing and community development needs and, and market conditions, um, to be able to make these decisions were gathered. Um, they, they serve as a framework for developing priorities, and as you know, priorities change. A lot happened back in 2020, and fast forward, we're now in the 2025 program year, and so priorities can change and shift. Um, the plan also, um, identifies what the annual priorities are as they relate to annual action plans, and, um, again, it covers that five-year period, and, um, also, as mentioned by our fire city clerk, the public review period for the plan is, uh, from March 25th through April 25th. It's a 30-day requirement. So the next, um, slide is more of a graphic of how the Citizen Participation Plan, um, ties in with the needs assessments of the cities and developing strategic plans, the annual action plan. Um, I did not mention the paper, the Consolidated, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is completed 60 days after the close of a program year, and it reports on the activities from the previous, um, annual action plan process, and how the expenditures were met, and caps were met, and, um, it, it's a comprehensive report of, of its performance. The, uh, needs analysis was, uh, derived from a lot of data. The, uh, American Community Survey was used, Decennial Census Information, um, the, the CHAZ data, which is a comprehensive housing affordability strategy. Um, also, the homeless count, um, information, um, is taken into consideration, um, CRA ratings, and Home Mortgage Disclosure Acts. Um, the city, um, started its process in preparing for this plan back in May, um, and that process extended through October 15th, um, 2024. Um, a total of 437 responses were collected, 353 in English and 84 in Spanish, in areas, um, of concern, um, that included economic development, infrastructure needs, homeless service needs, homeless and housing needs, affordability, and youth and centers, I'm sorry, youth and seniors. And, uh, as you can see on this slide, um, the various categories that fall under each of these are listed. Uh, in addition to that, two community meetings were held, um, on June 6th, um, at, uh, the Norwalk Senior Center and Social Services Center. Um, participants included residents, um, those who work in the city, and service providers, and students as well. Um, the top needs, um... The top needs um included homeless prevention programs and assistance. That was pretty much at the top of the list. Um, also, community facilities needs, um, such as a senior center, youth centers, neighborhood community centers, parks and recreational facilities, and ADA, which is American with Disability Act, accessibility improvements to roads and facilities. On September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, a housing summit was held in the city. It was attended by forty participants, um, from twenty-two different agencies and organizations. Um, it was a great event. Uh, a lot of key takeaways uh came out of that housing summit. A lot of affordable housing issues were raised, um, using some sites in the city to create small housing zoning, um, speeding up the placement of housing for individuals, um, and also um garnering support um for embracing affordable housing and collaboration. Um, the the biggest barriers that were raised included income levels, um, local government issues and zoning, the high cost of building, and uh how affordability is defined, and just the difficulty in maintaining housing and and NIMBYism. This next slide represents the stakeholders that were included in the preparation of the consolidated plan. Um, as you can see, there was a lot of outreach to agencies along uh various sectors uh and service areas. The current consolidated plan um before you uh includes identified priorities for this next um consolidated plan plan period, which includes vital services, which um is another reference for public services, public facilities, affordable housing and economic development. And the goals that were identified is increasing housing opportunities throughout the community, preserving the existing housing, rehabilitating it and enhancing neighborhoods, providing public service support, enhancing community facilities, enhancing economic development opportunities, and planning and grant administration, which is required for the administration of the programs. And the first, there's a total of four, five, six goals identified in this consolidated plan. Um, and uh, let's see, so the first one is increasing affordable housing opportunities. And uh, as listed here, um, it's building more housing, affordable housing program, CHODO set aside. A CHODO is a community housing development organization. It's um at the community level. Um, it's acts as a developer, uh, could be private or nonprofit, and it helps in the efforts of the city's production and affordable housing, and also home buyer and rental assistance programs. The second goal was maintaining and promoting neighborhood preservation. Um, so under this category, there's facade improvement programs, housing acquisition and rehab, remediating lead-based paint and abating it, and also uh neighborhood preservation support services. For the third goal, um, that included support of special needs programs and services, um, mainly the public service agencies, um, and their causes are listed under this category, including chronic homelessness and veteran type programs, in in addition to the domestic violence programs. For the fourth goal, it was enhancing community facilities, which is investing capital in into capital improvement projects in the city and social service agency uh capital projects and street infra- infrastructure in addition to addressing public safety concerns. The fifth goal was to enhance economic development opportunities, supporting local businesses, assisting commercial property owners, um, helping with business expansion loan programs, facade improvement grants and loans, and workforce force training and development programs. The sixth goal, planning and grant administration. This is a a requirement of the program. It um covers the planning and administration of the program, the reporting that's associated with it, and um also managing um the various programs that are funded. So in summary, on the consolidated plan, the city estimates receiving um approximately five million over the course of the next five years, and CDBG funds and in home funds, one million five hundred thousand, did I do my math right here? Yes. So, um, and this is going to cover a five-year period, so that just assumes the the current funding level extrapolated over a five-year period for both of these programs. Um, with that, I will turn the presentation over to our inner community development director.
Thank you, Monica.
For the annual action plan.
Uh, yes, um, thank you. Good, good presentation. And we're here to answer any questions at the conclusion of this presentation as well. As it relates to the uh CDBG and home programs that were described, as Monica mentioned, this is the annual action plan, which, you know, the the consolidated plan is a five-year plan, think of it as a long-range plan, and the annual action plan is just that. It's it's a snapshot and a projection of what uh is anticipated for the following year. Um, the city does receive community involvement block grant funds, CDBG, and home investment partnership program, home funds, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city prepares an annual action plan, as I mentioned, detailing the use of CDBG and home funds for each fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six for CDBG, we're estimating one million one hundred seventy-seven, uh, ninety-seven thousand. Uh, of that, the entitlement would be nine hundred seventy-seven thousand and ninety-seven dollars, and the program income carryover would be two hundred thousand dollars. For the home, FY twenty-five twenty-six, we're estimating a million eight, nine hundred and two. Uh, for entitlement, we're estimating two hundred forty thousand fourteen, four hundred fourteen dollars, and the program income, the carryover, is one point five six million four hundred eighty-nine dollars. The annual action plan details the specific activities, uh, as I said, to be implemented to meet community needs and priorities of the five-year consolidated plan. It must demonstrate activities that meet federal priorities and national objectives and provide funding amounts for each activity, and it summarizes the anticipated outcome of each activity. So as you see in the in the next slide, here is an estimate of the for the twenty-five twenty-six annual action plan projects and activities funded by CDBG. There's two items, the first two line items are what we call the 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 cap. Those, that's an administrative allowance uh that we're we're given to administer these programs. For the program administration, the twenty percent cap, and that's a hard limit on how much can be spent towards admin costs. Is estimated funding is a hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred nineteen. The Fair Housing, house, sorry, Fair Housing Foundation twenty percent cap is thirteen thousand dollars. And then the rest of the items, I'll I'll list off, emergency services, uh, social services center, seventy-five thousand dollars, community legal aid of Southern California, twenty thousand dollars, community family guidance center, twenty thousand dollars. Um, La Cada or LA Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, twenty thousand. We have in the capital improvement project allocation, five hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred seventy-eight for economic development activities, a hundred thousand dollars, and Upwards Inc., which is a subset to economic development, is ten thousand dollars recommended, for a total of nine hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars ninety-seven. Um, and just again, the cap is is limited, it's a limit, a hard limit for us. And in the event that there are funds that are unspent, they can be reprogrammed for the following year. They could be programmed for capital improvement projects, for your in information. Now, as part of the annual action plan, these are the funding recommendations from social service commissioners and the director. Um, they're outlined below. What you have is um, in the the various columns, you had the the groups, the social service groups that were identified. I think, believe some of them are here tonight to speak uh or answer any questions that you may have. Um, these, the first column indicated the funding um amounts uh for each group in fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, and then uh, and then it also indicates of those that did receive funding, um, the numbers uh of folks or uh cases that were assisted. I would like to indicate on the emergency assistance program. I believe that was a question from the last council presentation. Um, that that number is nine, but remember, that's uh one family unit. So it could be, you could, what we've learned and what we know from housing is if you're doing that kind of assistance, like with, say, emergency rent or and or utilities, that money doesn't last very long with the rent uh that we're dealing with here. And but we are, we did uh serve, as of December of twenty twenty-four, nine families. I believe Gabby may have more current information on that, but that's a significant number. Um, the next item, fentanyl solutions, there's a recommendation for no funding. Um, and it's, that's a duplicate program, we can elaborate more on that. So it's not we're a lot like we're eliminating something that provides that valuable service. That service is provided elsewhere. Um, you have the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, um, and the recommended uh funding uh by the Social Services Commission for that is twenty thousand dollars. And the rest of the groups are identified uh below. Um, and again, with the recommendations in the far right column, uh, which is up ultimately up to the council's discretion to determine on these line items, uh, what money gets allocated where. The next slide uh for the annual action plan is a continuance of the social service agencies um and and stats on that. Uh, we had emergency services through our social services center. Uh, we had uh twenty-five, that's, we're anticipating to be assisted. Um, and the proposed funding for that is seventy-five thousand dollars. Community legal aid of Southern California, I anticipate we can assist seventy for a funding request of twenty thousand. Community family guidance center, a hundred and fifty, that's a funding request of twenty thousand dollars. And La Cada, we're hoping to serve uh two hundred fifty if for a funding request of twenty thousand dollars. Total number or goal to be assisted, four hundred ninety-five, and the total uh funding for that is a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And as a as a note, the estimated CDBG cap for social service agencies is a total of one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. So let me go over some funding adjustments and describe to you what um, what's happening here. So let me, let me go back one or two. So for the home projects, proposed home projects activities, estimated grand award is two hundred forty thousand four hundred fourteen dollars. Program administration, twenty-four thousand forty-one dollars. The CHODO, uh, as Monica mentioned, community housing development organization, uh, grant award estimated is or portion would be thirty-six thousand sixty-two. Security deposit assistance, uh, very popular program for us, that's thirty thousand dollars. And an affordable housing project to be determined would be a hundred fifty thousand dollars, for a total of two hundred forty thousand four hundred fourteen. Let me go over some funding adjustments that are outlined here as well. Um, just to clarify, because this is to uh is in response to, again, questions we had by the city council at the last meeting. The draft annual action plan activities reflect estimated funding amounts for entitlement, carryover and program income. With the uncertainty we're experiencing now, we're going with what we know and what what we what we can anticipate. We may not know until um a couple more months, maybe a little bit later, in terms of the actual funding amounts. The city will adjust these amounts accordingly and prepare the final, final annual action plan reflective of the funding reality that I mentioned. The city council, as I said, you may modify or cancel funding to activities, but you cannot add any activities without thirty-day public review period. So we'd have to start the clock all over again with this document if you made any substantive changes to it. As Monica said or mentioned, the public review period begins March twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five through April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five. The final public hearing for the and your, the adoption of the annual action plan is scheduled for May sixth. That's a tentative date of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the deadline to submit the plan to HUD is May fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Again, that's what we know now. That date may change, we'll inform you accordingly. And again, substantial amendments can be considered for future revisions to approved activities by going through a process. So at this point, staff request city council and public input of the proposed activities and funding for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six CDBG and home annual action plan prior to final public hearing scheduled for May sixth, twenty twenty-five. Be more than happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Well, let's hold on now, let's, let's get our public testimony when we close the, when we close it, then we can give our, our comment. Uh, is there anybody willing, uh, willing, is there anybody wanting to speak on this item besides Melanie? And I'm, no, I'm gonna hack this name, Faurey? Okay.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Melanie Forme, the community impact manager at Upwards. Also a grateful parent and client of Upwards, both my toddlers went to Upwards Partner Day Cares in L.A. As the nation's largest childcare network, we're partnering with cities across the country to address the childcare crisis at the local level. We represent over a hundred and fifty thousand micro enterprise childcare providers, including fifteen here in Norwalk. As you know, uh, these providers are the workforce behind our workforce. They offer more accessible, affordable care and much more flexible hours for those of us who work Monday through Friday beyond, um, you know, beyond nine to five. Despite their importance to our community and local economy, childcare providers in Norwalk make on average seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour, qualifying many as low to moderate income and making it difficult for them to sustain, let alone grow their business. Meanwhile, there's a notable capacity gap with over seventy in Norwalk, with over seventy percent of all children under age six, unable to access licensed care, which leaves thousands of families, especially mothers and single parents, struggling to fully participate in the workforce. These daycares also offer um before and after-school care for up to age thirteen. So the goal of our boost program, which is what we propose for CDBG funding, is to equip low to moderate income to micro enterprise childcare providers with personalized coaching and digital tools to optimize their operations and revenue long-term. This allows them to efficiently manage and expand their business, create local teaching assistant jobs, and improve the quality and inclusivity of care. To reach these goals, each childcare provider is paired with a dedicated care specialist. This is essentially a business coach that will help create a custom business strategy, walk them through our childcare management software system, which would have free access to in perpetuity, and um a tailored boost curriculum. I'll skip ahead in the interest of time, but really, the program's not only um designed to expand access to affordable care, but really improve the quality and inclusivity of care. Again, something I can attest to as a parent with two toddlers in Upwards Partner Day Cares. Um, so we had proposed to bolster the six in-home daycares who are in most urgent need of support, help create at least two teaching assistant positions, which would expand access to affordable care for hundreds of working families. I should note that this is an economic development program, so while um it touches on a lot of public service needs, we aren't, uh, we don't fall under that public service fifteen percent cap. Um, we've, it's a proven model, we've launched it in twenty cities and counties nationwide, including Garden Grove, which is our largest partnership to gate. Today, I can send over case studies that show that our projected outcomes are very conservative. We keep not only meeting but exceeding projected outcomes. And I just ask that you support staff's original recommendation of the ten thousand in funding. And thank you for giving me the time to share a little bit more about what we do.
Thank you, Melanie.
Is there uh any other, anybody else that would like to uh speak on this item? Okay, come forward.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Priscilla Rodriguez alongside with my colleague Nolan Ross. Um, thank you for having us here today. Again, thank you for your continuous support. Um, we've been receiving CDBG funds for the past couple of years, um fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. We did serve approximately four hundred and ninety Norwalk residents, so we are um proud to serve the community. And we do hope that you will consider funding us for the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Bill Sinko, uh executive director with Community Family Guidance Center. And I just want to thank you all for your continued support year after year for our agency. It's really helped us to treat the residents of uh Norwalk. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the numbers that we're dealing with right now. Um, in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, we saw a hundred and fifty one families or clients. And utilized three thousand, two hundred and ninety two clinical hours of service, that's therapy, uh to these families. And we brought in uh about one million, one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of our DMH contract to help with all that. So that's what we expended on the residents in Norwalk in that particular year. This year is summing up to be about the same. We're uh currently brought in a hundred and eleven Norwalk families to our agency. And uh twenty five, uh two thousand five hundred and nineteen service hours expended so far this year. And we were able to utilize uh eight hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars of our uh Department of Mental Health contract to do that. The funding that you give us helps meet those needs, uh because the Department of Mental Health funding does not meet all those needs. So I have to go out and get funding to meet those needs. We uh are seeing a lot of kids for all kinds of various things, but I do want to say this last thing. And that is since COVID, our crisis cases went from twenty one percent of our caseload, sorry, I'm losing my voice. It's been a long day. To almost fifty percent of our caseload and crisis cases are kids that are harmed to themselves or harmed to others. So uh just to give you a little example there of what's going on with our kids out there and why our services are really badly needed. Uh, so I just want, again, want to thank you for funding us and helping us with this cause. And we're here to serve and we're not going anywhere because you're one of our top draw cities and we're gonna stay here and do the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor and city council members. Thank you. Uh, my name is Shelby Knox. I'm with Community Legal Aid, SoCal. And I just wanted to thank you. The city of Norwalk has been a partner of ours for many, many years. And we are the only free civil legal aid provider in the city of Norwalk, uh where we have one of our offices. And um the only free civil legal aid provider that's based in southeast Los Angeles County. So I just wanted to say thank you again. Your funding makes it possible for us to work with domestic violence survivors and help get them to safety. It helps us work with elderly residents who we meet at our clinic at the Social Services Center, two weeks, uh two days a month. To help them get uh economic security and deal with things like identification, uh stolen IDs and fraud. And uh access to public benefits. Um, also want to thank you for supporting our work for immigrants. Who are working to pursue naturalization and uh immigration remedies as well as miscellaneous aids such as WILLS. Um, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Is that it? We get everybody? See no other speakers? All closed with public hearing? Council, have any comments, questions?
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I'm not sure because this was a lot of information. It was a really good report, so thank you. I appreciate it's, it's very detailed. Um, I just wanted to ask, there's a little asterisk on our end over here on the Upwards Care. That under that ten thousand dollars um to be allocated as a micro enterprise business under economic development. So is that a separate uh fund? Or will it be part of the whole?
It's, it's part of the consideration. It's asterix because of the category that she serves. I personally spoke to. I believe it was Melanie and it sounds like she's got a good business plan. So we thought that the ten thousand dollars would, which is not quite what she wants, but it would be enough to get her started. And then see what the business model looks like going forward. So it's really to highlight that as, as more under the economic development category.
So as a micro enterprise?
That's correct.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I just want to thank staff one more time for coming back with some of the specific questions that we had. Um, I know that you guys had the information, but seeing it on paper actually helps us a little bit more. Um, and I know that two of our social services commissioners, I see, I see at least two um here with us today. Um, you guys come in on a Saturday to review the applications. Um, it's not always easy trying to make the hard decisions, but this recommendation and and what you guys do really help us out a lot. And I know that we have revisited um over the past couple of years, really how we're looking at um the distribution of these funds. And I really think with the larger amounts that we've decided to give to these nonprofit organizations help make a larger impact. Um, than giving a little bit too many. And I think that's what we really want to do here in the city and um thank you. Just want to thank you all for doing that. And i- if nobody has any other questions, I'll move, make a motion to move the item.
I was gonna say, oh, go ahead, Marty.
I was actually really surprised that the Norwalk Lomada uh did not apply for, uh did not submit an application for their career tech. I was very surprised about that because um that's one that I've wholeheartedly supported over the years. Because we're talking about career technical education for adults in our city that leads to certification and training and employment. So I was very surprised about that. Uh, any, any feedback or comments, Gabby?
No, I believe we actually called them, me and Rosio called them to find out, but I think there's a turnover in staff right now. Because it wasn't the same person that we normally speak to.
Yeah, that, that's the only thing I can think of is with all the changes and movement is maybe someone just wasn't aware. It wasn't part of their, you know, wasn't on their list or they weren't aware of this opportunity. So it is, and I'm guessing at this point it's, it's too late.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's too bad.
And I just wanted to share with you, um, council member Rios, that um I did go back and look at the nine. Uh, for the emergency uh program for social services.
That's right.
It, it's, it's nine cases, but it's really, uh, it's nine families and it was a total of forty seven residents altogether. It's a lot of back pay. And though it seems like a little bit, it, you know, the back pay or three months worth of rent. Used to be a couple thousand, now it's five to six thousand. And so we're spending, it, it seems like less people but for more money.
Yeah, so thank you for, thank you Gabby for that info. So like just uh as an example, typical scenario. How, what does that look like for a case? I mean, what, what are the circumstances? What, what triggers the assistance? Just to give me an idea.
Um, a lost in job, a uh car accident, they couldn't go back to work. They were on social security in between. They got behind in the rent and their fees to be paid. So we're trying to help them get back on their feet and then it becomes like five thousand dollars and that's a lot of money. But they're getting back to work. They are driving a car or a used car. They're getting some kind of transportation with us. So they don't become homeless. They can still be self-sufficient.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
That's it, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion left?
Teresa corrected me. It's a receivable file.
Oh, it's a receivable file? Okay, okay, well, we're received and filed then. Okay, item eleven, uh resolution. Two, two, five, zero, nine, resolution of intention to form an enhanced infrastructure financing district. Establish the Norwalk Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District Public Finance Authority and appoint members. Staff report clear.
Ms. Riley Hamilton?
Yes, thank you, honorable mayor and city council. Uh, tonight I'd like to introduce you, you know, Ken Hira from Cosmon, so he's here. He's been here for a while. And Joseph Diegues um is here as well to give you a presentation on what I think is one of the most exciting. Infrastructure financing tools available to the city, to any city. And thank you to the leadership of the city council and city manager for having the vision for something like this. You'll hear all about it. Um, it's an important, if it's adopted and followed through, it's going to be an important foundational document for us. To fund millions in infrastructure improvement project over the life of this district. So I, I want to recognize this. I'm really excited about it. Also want to indicate that L.A. County is completely on board to the point where they're emailing me. They're emailing Ken, they're emailing Joseph. They're saying, when is the council gonna get this and when are we gonna get the resolution? So we can get started on this. So I just wanted to set the tone and recognize you and the city manager for having the vision for this, all of you. Thank you. Joseph?
Thank you, Alex. And good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Joe Diegus here. I'm joined, as was mentioned by our president, Ken Hira. Been privileged to be your advisor on real estate, economic development, public finance matters for seven years or so. I've been with the firm for about fourteen. You can go to the next slide. The topic today, as Alex mentioned, is a specific funding and financing tool. Thanks. It's called the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District or EIFD. And it's a way, without adding any new or increased taxes, to capture value from new investment coming in Norwalk. Transit Village, Entertainment District, other projects, and taking a piece of that growth, setting it aside and dedicating those revenues. For critical infrastructure that's needed to facilitate that growth as well as other community investment priorities. So we analyzed that staff's direction, the feasibility of this tool in some targeted areas, and I'll show a map. And uh analysis came back positive. There does uh appear to be feasibility. Uh, the county seems to agree. And very importantly, that's a lot of why cities do this. It's the idea that you're bringing in net new dollars from a potential partner. In the county of Los Angeles to fund projects within the city. Tonight's action is non-binding in nature, this resolution of intention, but it's a critical step to advance this forward. And the, the county has already tentatively scheduled their resolution of intention to be your partner on April fifteenth. Uh, if it were moved forward tonight. After this evening, if it didn't move forward, next steps include preparation of a more specific plan. An infrastructure financing plan that has a lot more of that detail, how many dollars, what projects, duration, fiscal impacts. And then it's that plan with all that detail that then gets presented over a required series of public meetings and hearings. So that it's very clear to the members of the community what this is all about. And there's a sort of nowhere to hide. All, all the details are out there and it's very deliberate. So we always clarify, tax increment financing is not a new tax. The way it does work is a boundary is drawn and we'll show a map here. And when you form the district, you're essentially freezing the property values at the time the district is formed. And that's represented along the bottom here with this dotted line. And we don't change anything about the way property tax revenues flow today. But as the new investment comes in from some of these major projects and the assessed value grows, that's that lighter blue. The whole idea is to take a piece of that growth and set aside just a piece of it and restrict those dollars for the infrastructure to support that growth. And it's temporary for a specific period of time. And we liken it sometimes to a retirement account. It's not adding any new or increased taxes, but just setting aside a piece of the future property tax just within that boundary. And going along with that same retirement account analogy, a lot of the benefit for you as a city is that the county is matching your allocation. Almost like an employer matching an employee's retirement account allocation. And that's a lot of the benefit for a city. Some of the key ground rules here, these are long-term districts. They can be forty five years or more in duration. A new legal entity is set up to govern these, a so-called public financing authority. It's sort of a hybrid entity where members of the city council would serve on it. Uh, county supervisor would join it if they are your partner. And there are also members of the public who would sit alongside the elected officials. I talked about that business plan, the infrastructure financing plan. It's required to be prepared and lay out all those details on what's going to be funded. What amounts, et cetera, et cetera. And it's that plan that's required to be presented over a required set of meetings and hearings. All noticed by mail, by newspaper, by website. It's meant to be very transparent and accountable. There's no public vote at the end of that process because there's no new taxes. But there is an opportunity for folks within the boundary, landowners or residents within the financing district boundary to protest if they don't like any part of it. Eligible projects, it's an infrastructure financing district, so we're really talking about paying for infrastructure. Water, sewer, roads, affordable housing is qualified. And so that's really what we're talking about as far as what's eligible. Now our experience, the reason why cities and counties are doing that, first and foremost, it's got to make sense on a dollars and cents basis. That for uh committing that revenue stream, that you're catalyzing growth and investment that would otherwise not happen or happen as fast. And thereby bringing in net new revenues to the city, a positive return on investment to the general fund. And along with that, jobs, housing, solving infrastructure deficiencies, et cetera, et cetera. The second point we think is less obvious, but equally as important, it's the ability to attract yet other money from other sources, from other agencies like the county. From grant sources like state dollars. And so it's really about setting yourself up as a magnet for yet other money. There are about thirty one of these, just for context, formed throughout the state, up and down. There are six formed so far within this county. And they're all different in terms of partnerships between cities and counties, cities doing it alone, counties doing it alone. And the types of infrastructure being funded. And so again, six in the county, uh fully formed and many others sort of in process. We know um Santa Fe Springs, as an example, is probably several months behind where, where Norwalk is today. But potentially going down the same path next door. So the specific boundaries are very specific. Anything on this map in color is proposed to be in this financing district. So it's a bit checkerboard in nature and that's intentional. It's about two hundred acres in total. And the idea is focusing it just on properties and parcels where there is growth. And again, it's about capturing those specific private sector investment uh dollars and putting aside a piece of it. So it's about two percent of your city, very focused. We consider this a very uh fiscally uh conservative approach to doing these financing districts. And it's a lot of why the county was interested in being the city's partner. They like the, the very focused approach, focusing just on areas of growth. And leaving everything else to keep the general fund going on a day-to-day basis. Just some sample projects that have come up as far as specifically what would be funded with this tool. Um, this is some city and county outreach so far. Affordable housing has repetitively come up as a, as a priority. Roadway and utility capacity improvements like water, sewer, the Front Street Utility and Streetscape Improvement Project has come up. Parks and open space and transit connectivity. Again, these are just the, the lists so far. This is absolutely not set in stone and intended to be weighed in on by the elected officials and members of the public throughout the public process. Just to give some sense of the dollars we're talking about, lots of ways to use the dollars. This revenue stream can be bonded against. It doesn't have to be. It can be reused as a reimbursement mechanism if there are private sector partners that pay for infrastructure in advance. And so to pick one number out here, we'd say ten years out, how many dollars are we talking about? Between what can be bonded against or what's just sitting in the account to fund, order of magnitude thirty million dollars over the next ten years. And it continues to grow over time as the assessed property values grow with continued development and property value growth. And a lot of it, again, is not just that revenue stream and what you do with it in terms of bonding or not. But it's also about bringing in yet other dollars, not even shown on that prior page by having an increased eligibility, especially for state grant dollars. So the county has a policy that governs whether it says yes or no. So the county has a policy that governs whether it says yes or no to a city for partnership. And lots of criteria, I won't go through them all, but the, the punchline is this proposal checks all their boxes, and they are sort of anxious to be your partner if you do go down this path. And not many cities across the state can say that, uh, with these tools. So it's a good position to be in if you do want to go down this path. Return on investment, I talked about why cities do it. Part of our analysis was specifically by the numbers, why it could make sense for Norwalk. And so, again, I won't go through all the detail, but we're sort of hitting some major points here on housing, across affordability categories, job creation, the wages associated with those jobs, and then very importantly, just dollars and cents for the City General Fund, also for the County General Fund, and then yet other dollars, other agencies like county homelessness and transportation, sort of a net new revenues that really that returned on investment that the public agencies need to see in our experience. So wrapping up, there's a, there's a prescribed process, all in all, um, it's about putting together this, this, this resolution of intention, putting together that financing plan with all the detail, and then really vetting that plan several times. It honestly does feel repetitive, having done this many times. Uh, but it's sort of meant to be that way so that everyone really knows what's the deal, there's nowhere to hide, what are you gonna pay for, the dollar amounts? Lots of chances for folks to provide comment, provide objections if that's the case. And then ultimately, we would envision by the end of this calendar year, ideally October, November, be fully wrapped up with the district formation process. So for tonight, it's just about answering any questions or hearing your additional feedback. The consideration item is this non-binding resolution of intention. If it did move forward, the, the county has calendered theirs, again, tentatively on April fifteenth. And then off would go the, uh, the rest of that process, drafting the information and then presenting it over that public process. So that's it for our presentation, but we'd be very happy to answer your questions.
Teresa, um, uh, is there any questions, comments from council? Do you have any speaker cards for this? Okay. Go ahead.
On one of the slides, I, you caught my attention with the Park Tank Farm. That, that definitely caught my attention because that's been a, a location of light for, whoo, since like even before I was a child. Uh, and so it'd be really, really nice if we can come up with something with the vision of the leadership team. You know, city leadership team as well as the council, uh, to come up with something really good that would finally uh, work in that neighborhood and be a positive addition to our community. So, thank you for listening to that.
Thank you.
I'mma hold you to that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, I just wanted, again, thank you to staff, Jesus, um, Alex, and the team at Cosmont. Um, when you brought this to council, um, we are constantly trying to find ways to think outside the box. Um, when redevelopment was taken away from the cities, that was a blow. Um, but trying to find ways to rejuvenate growth and bring that back in with continued, um, partnerships across, you know, within the county and then private partnerships with the city. Um, this is definitely one way to really do that. And it's going to be very exciting that Norwalk is going to be one of the first ones to actually get it approved in this general area, and then once again be a leader, um, and a poised for example of how to continue to, to generate that excitement and that growth, um, and new revenues in your city. So thank you again for that.
Okay, do we have motion? Okay, go ahead.
I, um, I want to echo my colleagues' comments. Um, thank you. This looks fantastic. It's something that is very much needed in so many cities, and it's great to see that Norwalk is on the forefront of this. Um, I went to UCLA for a year as a, as a labor scholar, and we studied the effects of, um, Proposition thirteen on, on redevelopment, and that's when it just kind of came down. Um, it has, it's, it's positives, it's had its negatives, but the bottom line is that the city's lost a great deal. And so this, and, and this is a long time coming, I think, and it's, and it's a great, um, solution to a very big problem. And I, and I want to echo that, um, you know, our gratitude. And, and Cosmont has been with us for a while now. How many years? Seven years?
Yeah.
Seven years. And you've always looked out for Norwalk and, um, have given us some really good recommendations and some really good connections. So I, I'm looking forward to fostering this relationship and to continuing the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Rios?
Hi.
And Valencia?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Hi.
Maryella?
Hi.
Item twelve, resolution number twenty-five dash ten, budget amendment and agreement for planning and design services for Norwalk Park, Holyfield Park, and Robert White Park. Staff report, please.
Yes, may members of City Council, this is a, um, sort of a planning grant that, uh, we received. And, uh, this will make us eligible for even greater dollars as a requirement for other funding sources. With that, I'd like to have Sonia Batris, um, present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will be presenting on the resolution number twenty-five dash ten, budget amendment and agreement for planning and design services for Norwalk Park, Holyfield Park, and Robert White Park. In two thousand eighteen, the city hired a landscape architecture firm that assisted in developing two park master plans, one for Norwalk Park and one for Hermosillo Park. As part of the Hermosillo Park Master Plan, uh, committee engagement meetings were held that led to the successful submission and award of a California State Park Prop sixty-eight grant for eight point five million to rehabilitate Hermosillo Park in two thousand twenty. The County of Los Angeles Regional Park in Open Spaces has allocated a category of funds entitled Technical Assistance Program, or TAP, to assist cities in increasing their park acreage and analyzing potential vacant parcels of land that can be developed into parks and open space. The city received a TAP allocation of a hundred and eighty-five thousand to assist in adding park space. The city will utilize these funds as follows. Number one, develop a conceptual plan incorporating the newly acquired Caltrans lots into Norwalk's park footprint and connecting the Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex parking lot to the Norwalk Aquatic Pavilion's parking lot. Conduct committee engagement meetings to pursue the Land and Water Conservation Fund, a grant administered through the United States National Park Service for Norwalk Park. And number three, develop a park master plan for Holyfield Park that will incorporate the fifteen acres acquired from the United States Air Force. In two thousand twenty-four, Rob- Robert White Park witnessed park improvements such as a new playground, modular restroom, and the city's first dog park. The park still requires a master plan that will provide staff with the framework for future improvements such as uh, lighting system, irrigation, ADA accessibility, accessible parking, um, elec- electrical improvements and other improvements to the park and Shoshone and Campsite. On December twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, the city issued a request for proposals twenty-five dash eight oh three to solicit firms to provide planning and design services at three city parks. Requested services included updates to the two thousand nineteen Norwalk Park Master Plan to incorporate additional park space, community engagement assistance, and design and landscaping plans. An evaluation committee of city staff from the Recreation and Park Services Department and the Public Services Department evaluated the submittals. The submitted, uh, proposals were evaluated based on, uh, RFP twenty-five dash eight oh three criteria as part of the typical RFP process. Staff found David Bolt's Design DVD to be the most qualified firm. After reviewing the fee proposal, staff met with DVD to review the scope of work and fee schedule. The fee proposal, after adjusting the scope of work, is six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. Staff reviewed the DVD fee proposal of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen, and determined the fee was commensurate with the proposed work and within the city's available budget for this study. The total fiscal, fiscal impact for preparing the proposed services is six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen. As summarized in table two on the screen, the item is not currently budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A budget amendment is required. We currently have under the city fund seven four three, Park Renovation Fund, four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six. In the TAP funds, we have one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty. The recommended action is consistent with our strategic plan. Goal number two, working in partnership with our community to achieve safe and livable neighborhoods. And goal number four, support sustainability and climate resis- resilience throughout the community. Uh, staff recommends City Council adopt, A, I'm sorry, adopt resolution number twenty-five dash ten, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Norwalk authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the Norwalk Park, Holyfield Park, and Robert White Park Planning and Design Project in the amount of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen. And B, approve an agreement with David Bolt's Design for Planning and Design Services for six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen, and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement and any amendments provided there is funding in the budget and is within the City Manager's signing authority on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. Thank you for your time. I'm available for any questions. We also have representatives of our, of our engineering department and a representative from David Bolt's Design as well to answer any questions.
Brian Tisdale?
Good evening, Council again. Um, planning is the first step, and without making an impact at this point, it is too late to affect change. The Firestone Project that just received more funds will have concrete parkways, something I've spoken out against. It is too late to fix that because it was not a priority during the design phase. This is the chance to make native plants, improve biodiversity, and water conservation a priority with this project. Grass is great for recreation, but this is at least fifteen acres, a lot more, but it's not on the agenda. Some of that massive area could be used as an example for residents of the beauty of native plants and the pollinators that depend on them. We are spending six hundred thousand dollars. We can ask for specific, specific items to be included. This would also support the sustainability plan, and a native garden could be a great addition to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? None, Teresa? Okay. Okay, Council, any questions? Okay, fire away, Margarita.
Okay, um, you said there was a representative here? For David Holtz?
Yes. Uh, his name is Bryant Avolos, he's the studio manager. I have a couple of questions.
Hello.
Hi, um, uh, so I'm wondering, uh, how many or what are some of the projects in our nearby region that have been, uh, worked on, created, implemented, designed by David Holtz?
Sure, and as a part of our proposal, we included these parks. Uh, one would be Whittaker Elementary, which was actually the California Parks and Recreation, uh, Design Award for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, just opened in Buena Park. Another one, uh, currently under construction is Fremont Park in Glendale. Uh, it's one of the largest, um, parks that will have all types of amenities that we're looking for in, in Norwalk, and very similar in scope. Uh, currently, we have Circle Park also in, uh, in its final stages, and Primrose Park, which is also the two thousand twenty-one CPRS award winner.
Okay, so when you're developing your plan, I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned amenities. Um, what, what is it that you're proposing for the City of Norwalk?
Uh,
I mean, not only like the big, you know, overall plan, but I mean, just the gist of, you know, what is, because I've noticed the designs, there's usually like a theme specific. It's, I like, you know, that depending on the city, it looks like there's, you know, you, you kind of identify a theme based on me looking at the work, you know, that your company has done. So I'm wondering if you're that far into the process where you've already looked at or considered a theme for Norwalk. Looking at the, as you mentioned yourself, the amenities, what is it that you feel would be, um, would go over very well?
Well, some of, some of the, the, the key, uh, processes of, uh, some of these, uh, what we've been tasked to do is actually to get community input, uh, for, for these things. And it's something that, uh, we as a firm strive and excel in to be able to gauge public opinion and to really, uh, extract the information that we need through various exercises and through various, what we like to call workshops, because we invite the, the public to come and work with us. Uh, through that, that's how we will develop, uh, and, and in accordance with the city and the master plan, um, the amenities and, um, all the program and, and things like theme, uh, are, um, very heavily, um, in, uh, influenced through these processes.
Okay, no, no, that sounds good. I mean, I looked at some of the designs, they're really, really nice, the playgrounds and the
Thank you.
the green space, and so, um, I hope that you guys come up with something spectacular.
We will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
I love parks, that's why I just had to.
Say.
Do we have, uh, we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmembers Rios?
Hi.
Valencia?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Hi.
Maryella?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, Senate Bill nine, discussion. Staff report, please.
Yes, may members of City Council, the next two items will be housing-related, um, that, uh, have been, sort of led by the state, uh, with legislative actions, um, that, um, one takes, uh, local control away from, uh, cities and its zoning standards. Um, we will have, uh, Mr. Alex Hamilton present both.
Alex, before you get started, Jesus, you're too kind. You said it was led by the state, you should have said it was mandated by the state.
Stand corrected.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Uh, the next two items, I've got, the first one is a less lengthy presentation, the next one is a lot more lengthy, so it's at your discretion as to how far I go with this. Uh, but I would, it's timely that we speak to you and update you on both the SB nine and the state laws regarding ADUs. Um, our planning staff is doing excellent work every day trying to manage these things. Uh, I will acknowledge Sophia Tatlian, who's our senior planner, she's here tonight and can answer her technical questions on ADUs. She's been immersed in ADUs for the last year. And Kristy Wong, who was here earlier, has also done some work, and of course, our plant, Development Services Manager, Nancy Lee, too. So at this point, you tell me when to stop, but I'll start with SB nine, and then we'll go from there. So SB nine was effective on January first of two thousand twenty-two, and it's not on the slide, let me pull that up, but so as a bit of background, the subdivision map act was created in the early nineteen seventies in California. The very purpose of the map act was to regulate the division of land. As you know, in California, being what I call a, a state that was based on, founded on real estate uh, development and speculation, for the last hundred years before the, uh, the subdivision map act, you would literally have lots subdivided in the middle of nowhere, in the middle of the desert that were, were on what we call paper streets. They had no public infrastructure, they had no access to public streets. There were no utilities. That's what the subdivision map act set to curb, starting in the early seventies. And frankly, as a planner, I think it did a really good job, uh, by requiring that every subdivision show that it can access utilities, that it had proper, uh, access to, to street frontage and whatnot. So in my opinion, this SB nine, which has been with us a little bit, is undermining the subdivision map act, and the next few slides, I think you'll see some examples of that. So to be very clear, uh, this is a state mandate to the Vice Mayor's point, and it requires that the city ministerially approve, uh, two kinds of actions, and ministerially approved means that if you meet certain conditions set forth, in this case by the state, we can't deny a permit for this. The city has no discretion. The city has no discretion over these items, so I want to be very clear about that as we go through this. SB nine requires the, and or allows for up, up to two eight hundred square foot primary units per parcel. And it also allows for the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. That's called the urban lot split. Also accessory dwelling units, which is the next topic, may be constructed with SB nine units as well. So some standards again that are mandated by the state for any developments that are taking advantage of the SB nine, uh, state law. Uh, setbacks, four feet from the side and rear property lines. No setback for existing or proposed structure located in the same dimensions as the existing structure. Off-street parking, one space per unit for each primary dwelling unit and less. And there's some carve-outs that will allow these things to be built without any parking. If you're within one half a mile walking distance of a high quality transit corridor or major transit stop. We have more information on that later, or you show a car share vehicle within one block of the parcel. Again, the intent of the state was to, uh, streamline regulations because the, um, the. I believe the perception was that the regulations were getting in the way of constructing enough of, of housing units. And we know that's a lot more complicated than that. As it relates to SB nine, it will allow for the creation of a maximum of two parcels in equal lot area. With one parcel not smaller than forty percent of the original lot area. Most of our lots in Norwalk in the R one zone are five thousand square feet. Again, I have some good graphics I can show you on this in a bit. It also mandates that newly created parcels shall not be smaller than twelve hundred square feet an area. Conformance with the subdivision map act, well, I, I talked a little bit about what I think it means for that. Um, in addition, and here's a key, there's no requirement for dedications, rights of way or the construction of on off-site improvements. Luckily for SB nine in this city, uh, we have the stats that we've been tracking. We haven't had many inquiries or SB nine projects in the city, but I'll show you some examples of ones that we do have that were approved. In addition, SB nine projects are not allowed to alter or demolish deed restricted affordable housing, so that's a good thing. Rent controlled housing, the state doesn't want to lose that through this SB nine. Properties occupied by tenant the last three years. Or the removal of more than twenty five percent of the exterior walls in a property that's been occupied by tenant the last three years. Again, these are the state rules. The following are prohibited by the state, which is in my opinion, a good thing. Short-term rentals of less than thirty days, which is something we really would want to control anyway. But it does not allow for the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions. So if you've got a structure that is non-conforming as to setback or height and they want to take. Uh, advantage of the SB nine, they, they could do that and wouldn't have to remedy the non-conforming conditions. Other limitations on SB nine are properties within a historic district. Urban lot splits do require owner occupancy for three years. Um, SB nine projects are limited to residential uses only. And lots adjacent to another lot where a property owner, any person acting in concert with the owner. That had previously had an urban lot split is not eligible, so if your neighbor took advantage and you wouldn't be eligible. One key point here, it, there would have to be extraordinary reasons. The state does recognize that the building official can deny an SB nine project if it creates a specific adverse impact on public health. And safety, so that could be any number of things from inadequate, uh, water supply. To, uh, fire protection, fire life safety, there could be a number of factors where that could be denied. So this map shows the predominance of zoning in the city of Norwalk is R one. The map here shows it in, in yellow, so it, it just, it really sets the, the tone for the, the impact or potential impact for here. Uh, for SB nine and ADUs as well. So the twenty twenty one through twenty nine housing element, uh, identified twenty one thousand eight hundred sixty nine single family residences in our city. Of which sixty three point eight are owner percent occupied. And I can tell you from experience, that's an amazing number. I worked in communities where their ownership to rent, renter ratio was a lot less. And good cities drive for a balance, but they also like owner occupied housing. People tend to take better care when they're invested that way, so that's a really good number. And a really encouraging number for the city of Norwalk. So the next few slides, the first slide, the one on top, these next two are going to show typical conditions in Norwalk. Where you'll typically get a single family residence with an attached garage, uh, front, side and rear of the property. And then you'll get a single family residence with a detached garage. That's very typical in the city of Norwalk. We're all familiar with that. So now I'm going to go into what could be allowed with the SB nine units. So the first one, the graphic on top is with no lot split, you could do two primary dwellings on a lot. This next graphic, the one on the bottom, and I'm going to have to walk you through it because I had to look at it a few times to be sure that I was looking at it correctly. Would allow for, let's say you had a primary dwelling in the front, you could split it into two. You could also have a junior accessory dwelling unit, which is physically part of the house itself. And you could have a detached ADU in the back. So literally in these cases, as we go forward, you could see that with SB nine and the ADU law, we're, we're. Quadrupling at least in some cases, the density in these residential family neighborhoods. So the next graphic, uh, shows what you could do with an urban lot split and the, and the top one simply shows. You could basically have two primary attached dwellings on the front lot and then you could carve out the back lot and build two more. Primary attached dwelling units. So again, you're going from a situation where one lot may have had one single family unit. To four with no parking. The next graphic on the bottom shows, uh, another scenario where you could split the lot, keep the front house. But build the two primary dwellings in the back. So again, you've, you've doubled, at least doubled the density there. So I've got. I hope, hope these pictures don't offend anyone. I think Nancy did a really good job. Um, there's one example here of, of a lot, uh, we can't, you know, I'm not going to identify the address. But before SB nine, it was a single family residence, thousand sixteen square feet. On a seventy one hundred and eighty two square foot parcel, kind of big by Norwalk standards. After SB nine, again, we had no say in this. They were able to, um, keep the primary dwelling on the parcel one, split it off. And it created a four thousand two hundred twenty seven square foot, uh, parcel, brand new parcel. And then the back house and the, the lot that was split that was created. Was a two, two thousand nine hundred fifty five square foot lot with one, about a thousand square foot primary dwelling unit. They did at least pro- provide a garage, but you can look at the graphic on top and you can look at the one on bottom. And again, I'm not faulting for people for, you know, people for doing what the state law allows them to do. But we've got to assess the impacts to the community that these things have. In my opinion, you've got something as before as a solid, single family residential neighborhood in the truest sense. And then after SB nine, double the density on, on what would mount to substandard lots because our minimum lot size in R one is five thousand square feet. I've got another example. So before SB nine, um, there was a, a twelve hundred and ninety one square foot residence on an eight thousand one hundred sixty seven square foot parcel. That's the top picture. The bottom picture shows what happens after SB nine. Uh, you have the parcel one, which was the primary dwelling, uh, and that parcel is now four thousand eight hundred eighty nine square feet. The new parcel created, split off from is three thousand two hundred seventy eight square feet. With two eight hundred square foot primary dwellings with a, with two car garages, so they do have parking. This just goes to show the potential, luckily the impacts have been limited in this community, but. Is there a question, council member? Oh, I, I. That, that's the danger of showing pictures in your own community, but we deliberately went out of our way not to include addresses. So I won't dwell on those. So, uh, potential impacts of, of SB nine in Norwalk, um, off-street parking, as I mentioned, especially when combined with. ADUs or JADUs, since no parking is required. The streets, uh, take up that parking demand and, and you know full well what that looks like. And you hear about it all the time, I'm sure. Uh, the lack of open space, uh, as it stands now, our current standard in R one is for a five hundred square foot open space minimum. We've got some recommendations on that in addition with some other objective standards in the future. There are privacy concerns if SB nine units are two stories in height. Um, and then poor architectural designing compatibility with the neighborhood. So literally without any objective standards, somebody could build something that is totally out of character with the neighborhood. Doesn't even match the house and lot that it was split off from. A city SB nine ordinance would meet state law requirements and provide the city with the ability to enforce objective standards. That's what I meant to say here while addressing the above mentioned impacts to the extent feasible. That's the purpose of the workshop tonight. That's why we brought this item to the planning commission as, as well. So some things that we could look to do that have to be objective. Relate to sub, uh, subdivision zoning and design review standards. Our recommendation in this is taking feedback from you, the city council. We would come back after your feedback, uh, with the draft ordinance, the planning commission and to you, uh, for adoption. We could look into ways to proliferate the, prevent the proliferation of ADUs with SB nine developments. As I said, it's not been a particular problem here in Norwalk, but you know, anything is possible. We could look at building separation requirements, limiting the size of SB nine units to eight hundred square feet maximum. Require enclosed off-street parking stalls when possible. Uh, even if it takes the form of a garage or maybe even a carport. I know carports are not necessarily the best solution, but. Um, it gets parking on site potentially. Uh, require affordable SB nine units. If people are going to take advantage of this state law. We could look into the feasibility of making sure that maybe one of those units has an affordability covenant. Again, this is not a promise, but it's a potential as to what we could look into to safeguard the community. Keep us consistent with state law, but maybe safeguard the community better in, 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 in a way. We could look at single story height restrictions and plate height limitations. By that I mean simply that your, the plate is typically from where the wall of the building comes out of the ground to the bottom of the roof. That's your plate height. So you typically you get a, you know, a low plate height would be eight feet, a taller one would be ten for a single story, single story. But you don't want to get into something that's like fifteen feet plate height, even if it's single story, that's just going to be very boxy in my opinion. We could also look at requiring mature trees, live landscaping and open space. Uh, and we could also look at requiring lead, which is a high energy, uh, compliance certification for new SB nine units. Something that I managed successfully in another city that I work for. So if we're going to take advantage of state law, then you need to meet certain lead standards for energy efficient, which is baked into the energy code anyway. But we could look at other options for that if that's the council's direction on it. Um, other I, ideas that, that we've come up with, um, are to. Require gray water systems or recycling of, of water. Um, all electric energy star appliances and cool roof technology. These are all technologies that are available and they're out there. Of course, they add cost to the cost of construction, uh, but it may be one way of safeguarding our community and. And letting people take advantage of something, but at the same time, not impacting the grid or the infrastructure unnecessarily. Um, we could restrict SB nine units, um, in special districts, including areas with high fire or seismic risks exists. That's not the case in Norwalk, not high fire luckily, but I think seismic, there are some areas where you have liquefaction, uh, issues. Or I think we even have issues with the soil where, uh, because of the, the history here with the dairy farms and the, the content of the soil. So we have, you have to use a special concrete to a certain strength for that. One, one recommendation for subdivisions is we could look at parcel configurations. Where we make sure that the lot split line would be a straight line parallel to the street with an access easement. To provide street access to the rear parcel and or a minimum lot frontage requirements for the rear lot. One of the examples I showed you was literally a lot split where somebody split their lot in half and created a parcel in the back. Well, how do you get to that parcel in the back? Typically you would have what we call a flag lot. Flag lots are very problematic because oftentimes the stem of the lot is, you know, that's how you take service from the street. But if you don't get an easement recorded over that flag lot, guess what? The person in the front house is parking in the driveway that's supposed to be shared and you've created a parking problem. That then the city staff has to deal with because the perception is we allowed it, we encouraged it, we were part of it, even though it's a civil matter. So we can look at, at some, uh, dimensions and configurations for lots. Um, also objective design standards for a exterior building materials, finish and design. Of course, compliance with LA County fire requirements and on-street parking limitations were applicable. I mentioned this because I know it's something that's in the works and, and I can't go far with it. Um, but one of the ideas potentially is if there, if there is an empirical study that shows that, um. There are districts that are already parking impacted. We could certainly have a discussion with the city attorney about can we come up with objective standards for that? And it may not hold past the smell test with the state, but it's something that we're very sensitive to. Because we hear it and planning Ozzy and his staff deal with it all the time. So on February twelfth, twenty twenty five, the planning commission provide, provided feedback on SB nine. Uh, I don't, you won't be surprised at their feedback. They did express concerns with SB nine units and off-street parking impacts on residential streets. And they believe that SB nine and eighty unit, unit should have the least impact on residential, um, neighborhoods. So at this point, this is a workshop only. Um, we are asking you to provide feedback on potential SB nine objective standards. And we'll consider those and we'll draft an ordinance and work, come back to the planning commission and ultimately to city council. We just didn't want to present you with a draft ordinance and you not have the background and context for this. Sorry, that was a lot. If they think that's a lot, the other ones.
It's like you gave us, uh, ten volumes of an encyclopedia and then you're going to give us a pop quiz.
Sorry about that.
I think the, I think for me, the recommendations are. You know, that you stated are pretty accurate because speaking for myself. I want the most conservative approach these things as we can possibly have. And I think that's your approach. It appears to be your approach. And I think that's, uh, that's, that's very much appreciated because. Um, I think we all know where we're headed with this. If these things, if these things become common in the city, it's going to create. It, it's going to have so many collateral impacts. From everything from, you know, like you were talking about with the grid, with energy, with sewer, with law enforcement, with parking, with. You know, once it's all built. And these things start becoming a problem. You know, it's, it's going to be too late for anybody to do anything. And so, you know, I know we're somewhat limited, but speaking for myself, I want to take the most conservative approach to as possible. And I think that's where you're, that's where you're going.
Mayor, I, I would a hundred percent agree. Um, I don't know how many times I advocated against SB nine and SB ten. Um, they were really partnered back to back with each other. Um, between Tony Atkins, Senator Weiner's office, being in Sacramento, um, contract cities. The League of Cities, every city in Southern California basically opposed these two bills. Um, and unfortunately they passed. Um, to know that we could have a single family residence, subdivide that property and put four new. Mailing addresses on that property just. Blew me away. Um, so I agree with the mayor. I would say any way possible, we can be as, as strict. To ensure that if this mandate is being forced upon us, we are doing the best we can to preserve our city. Um, the other thing that I would really, really. Watch for, and I know it's constantly changing, is the LA County fire codes. Um, I've gotten several phone calls from residents where they just tried to do a small room addition. Not an EDU or, you know, anything specific to SB nine. And the county was requiring them to add a new fire hydrant in the neighborhood and they had to pay for it. Because it's adding square footage to the house. Um, so that, the LA County fire laws are always changing, so I would definitely. Recommend that we're staying on top of that because anytime you're adding square footage, living square footage to the property. It changes the distance to the location of a fire hydrant. And what, what these residents don't understand is a majority of our city has been grandfathered in to LA County Fire Codes from 50, 60 years ago. And every single time something changed, now if you change your property and the living square footage, it changes to the most recent fire code. And now a family that is just trying to add one small room is paying thousands and thousands of dollars to have, to add a brand-new fire hydrant put in at their cost. So I, I agree with the mayor. Anything and everything we can do to make it as tight as possible for our city has to be done to protect the local control of whatever we have left for this bill.
Okay, we have a motion?
It's a move.
I think it's.
It's this receiving file. So you, you've got the, the direction then?
I sure did.
Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to item 14, accessory dwelling unit update. How many volumes of the encyclopedia are we going to get this time?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm stepping back from the microphone. So this one, again, there's a lot more information with this presentation. So if you want to split it up or if you want me to just, I'll get through it and then just get your feedback. I'll try and touch on some of the issues that we're seeing, especially Sophia who's here. She deals with ADU requests in and day in and day out. And we've, we've got stats here. So I'll, I'll go through them and then if you want me to slow down, let me know. So what we're going to do is we're going to talk about what an ADU is. We're going to provide a summary of recent state laws. I'm not going to get into detail on that. I'm just going to, there's a couple of slides that will literally summarize the plethora of state laws relating to ADUs of the last three years. It's, it's an amazing list when you see it. We're going to talk about the state ADU regulations and then concerns and opportunities and next steps. So here we go with the graphics. So ADUs are independent accessory living facilities that meet the following criteria. And there's four examples here. ADUs may be converted from existing living space, garage or accessory structure space and attached or detached from the primary dwelling. Independent kitchen, bathroom and exterior entrance is required. They can be between 150 square feet and 1,200 square feet in size. And they would have separate utilities and addresses. So in the first example, she wouldn't get a lot of in Norwalk, but it's common in other cities. You might have a house that has a full basement or a California basement. They might, you know, they'd be allowed to convert that and, and finish it out and convert it to an ADU. That's example number one. The most common example that we get in Norwalk is the house that has a detached garage where they are allowed to convert the garage. Episode or item number three is a brand-new detached ADU in the backyard. And then of course, number four is an attached, attached ADU. Again, would have to have separate independent kitchen, bathroom and exterior entrance. So I'm not going to dwell on this, but since 2018, when this was enacted, we adopted updates to the municipal code in 2018. It was pretty much mirrored what the state allowed. And then you see the subsequent amendments beginning in 2019 all the way to 2024. So it, it's every, it's every step that's been taken by the state to further codify what they meant by the ADU law. And in my opinion, it's made it progressively worse. It hasn't solved the housing crisis. This also shows the, the next slide shows our attempts to keep up with all the state amendments. So at, in, most recently in 2024. So we wanted to inform you as to all the various state amendments related to it, but also wanted to let you know that it's, we're going to come back with a comprehensive ADU ordinance as a draft with as many objective standards as we can get, subject to your, your direction and concurrence. So the, just to be clear on the mandates, ADUs must be allowed in all zones where residential use is allowed. There are such a thing as exempt ADUs and I'll get into square footage on that. Parking replacement and requirements, ADU setbacks are prescribed by the state. Development, I'll, I'll skip that because I don't, I think that's a typo for development impact fees. There's owner occupancy requirement for ADUs and review, we're obligated to review requests for ADUs and approve or deny within 60 days. And it's very common for our staff to get a plethora of ADU-related questions with all kinds of different ADU designs and ideas. And if we so much as have a policy where we push back, they say, well, we'll call state HCD. So that's, that's what our staff is dealing with all the time. So California, and then there's now junior accessory dwelling unit. And California law defines it as a unit that is no more than 500 square feet in size, contained entirely within a single-family residence. So you can have a carve-out within your own home for a junior accessory dwelling unit. As I said, you'd have to have separate kitchen, separate sanitation facilities. But you could share, it says you could share sanitation facilities with the existing, so a shared bathroom would be allowed. Kitchen and exterior entrance, independent of single-family dwelling is required. Owner occupancy is a requirement and junior ADUs are a type of exempt ADU. So now with the different versions here. So I'll read the, the one junior ADU, maximum size 500 square feet. One detached or attached ADU conversion, ADU conversion may add up to 150 square feet for ingress and egress. Maximum size of converted ADU based on size of accessory structure may be part of a proposed single-family dwelling. So I had to read that off, but just look at the graphic on your left. That's before condition, standard condition for a Norwalk with a main dwelling and a detached garage. If you look at letter B, that's an example of you keep the single-family house in front. You convert your detached garage to an ADU and you can add up to 150 square feet to that for access, for like a porch area to access it. That would be option A. Option B would be to keep your main dwelling unit, carve out a portion of that house and convert it into a junior accessory dwelling unit, convert your garage to an ADU and add 150 square feet to that. And then option C would be keep your main house, convert a portion of the house to a junior accessory dwelling unit, convert another portion of it to an accessory dwelling unit, add 150 square feet on the back for a porch and keep your garage. So we just wanted to, with graphics, the planning staff did a really good job of showing what's possible here. So for ADUs, attached, detached ADUs, newly constructed, they would be, and these are exempted ones, these are the ones we can't say no to, would be 800 square feet or less. So if somebody comes in with an 800 square feet or less ADU detached, with certain exceptions, we can't say no. They have to be at least four feet from the side of rear property line. There isn't applicable height allowance. I'll get into that briefly. We've got people now wanting to do two-story ADUs. And then covered or uncovered parking spaces lost to build an ADU does not need to be replaced. Sorry, my mic volume goes up at certain times. But this is an example where you would have an existing single-family dwelling and then that existing single-family dwelling would construct an ADU in the backyard. So ADUs in multifamily residential zones in the, in our R2, R3 and R4 zone. So you can have one ADU or 25% of the units may be converted from entirely within a multifamily residential non-habitable space such as a garage, carport or storage room. Up to two detached ADUs, applicable height allowance would apply. Covered or uncovered parking spaces that are taken away do not need to be replaced. And new state law effective in 2025 will allow up to eight, eight detached ADUs. So you've got a before condition with a 16-unit multifamily apartment building with say garages or carports. Those, that 16-unit multifamily building can remain and the garages or carports can be converted into ADUs. And then you, in addition, you could build two new ADUs in the back. This raises a whole series of issues. As, as many of you know, a lot of our multifamily projects had been subject to like precise development plan going approval, discretionary approval going back to the 60s. So we do have some examples where people are coming in wanting to convert rec room spaces, recreational spaces that were integral to the part of that apartment complex into ADUs. And we tell them as a policy, you can't. They say, yes, we can. We're going to the HCD. So that's what we're dealing with here. We're also saying that these multifamily projects that had an entitlement, like a discretionary approval, you can't undo that entitlement. They say, yes, we can. We're going to the state. So that's an example of what we're dealing with. Not, I mean, it's not constant, but it's enough to be concerning. The state standards for ADU is 16 feet in height. There is an 18-foot height allowance for a detached ADU in a single-family or multifamily district that is within one-half mile walking distance of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor. An additional two feet in height can, to accommodate a roof pitch on an ADU that is aligned with the roof pitch of the primary dwelling unit. So if you had a Victorian-style house in front, you know, the idea is that you could match the roof line with the ADU in the back. 18 feet for a detached ADU with multi-story, multifamily residential. 25 feet of the, or height limitation in the underlying zone for an attached ADU, which is ever is less. So, so the major transit stop really quickly, the state is defining it as, it's a site containing any of the following. A rail or bus rapid transit station, ferry terminal served by either bus or rail transit, the intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency of service, interval of 20 minutes or less during the morning and afternoon peak. It's key to know these because this would exempt an ADU from having to meet the parking standard. And it does set forth a high-quality transit corridor and defines it. We have some ideas on that as well that we would like to share. One parking stall would be required unless the ADU is within these locations that I discussed from the transit stop is within a historic district or there's any number of other requirements where you, the parking stall would be required with certain exceptions. Currently, the Norwalk Municipal Code requires no additional parking for ADUs. So to this standard that the state is setting forth, if we follow the state standard, which said anything within a certain district of public transit, be a bus node or transportation route. If we followed this, this graphic shows that, kind of hard to see, but the areas in circles, the red circles are, are the areas that would be exempt, that would otherwise, they would have to require parking. They couldn't take this exemption. No, I, I take that back. I'm sorry. It's in the reverse. These are the only areas where you could do it without having to, the rest, bottom line is a predominant portion of the city would be subject to the state definition of a high-quality transit zone, therefore would be exempt from parking. So, and I'll get into that more later, but some graphics here. Attached, detached the main dwelling. So we've got before and after conditions, up to 1,000 square feet for a studio or one-bedroom floor plan, up to 1,200 square feet for a two-bedroom plan. Applicable height allowance and onsite parking requirements, required setback of four feet from side and rear and city may impose additional objective standards. So the diagram before is a single-family residence on a single-family lot. After is a single-family residence with an attached ADU separated from the side rear property line by four feet. And then you have another condition, an existing primary single-family dwelling unit with an ADU as well. So a key stat here is beginning in 2018, we started obviously tracking the number of applications that came in to city planning. You can see it reached its all-time high of 200 plus, starting in 2023. It's kind of fallen off a little. I don't know what that trend indicates, but I did want to show you the, the volume that our planning department is dealing with on this. And again, it's most often times it's people that have concepts. We review the concept plans. We tell them what they can and can't do. And if they don't like the answer, they, you know, threaten to go to the state. So adverse impacts that we've identified. We've, we're getting increased requests to demolish existing garages or carports. There's a lack of onsite parking, as we all know. We're seeing decreased privacy, the same issue that we see with SB9, but only on a higher volume basis. There's requests to build two-story ADUs. Increased request to build ADUs in our residential horse overlay property, which is an overlay zone and with an objective standard, probably should have some tighter standards because with the, the horse overlay property, as you, as you know, the keeping of horses requires a certain amount of space for the animal. So we've had a couple of applications where they wanted to come in and RH properties, build ADUs. Then they're taking away the open space, required open space for the animal. So it, it, it's a inherent conflict in some cases. I know the lots are deeper, but they were deep for that purpose. That's why we have the RH overlay. But we are seeing increased requests to do that. Reduced open space. State law requires a city to permit at least one 800-square-foot ADU regardless of lot size, lot coverage, floor ratio or open space requirements. Those are objective standards that unfortunately, other than the 500 square feet of open space, we don't have. We don't have lot coverage. We don't have floor ratio. Other adverse impacts that we're seeing, poor architectural design and compatibility with primary dwelling. Separate design review is not permitted. What our staff is doing now is saying at least make the color and, the color materials and roofing materials match to the extent possible. Otherwise you have a house that looks completely different from the house in front. There is a loophole that allows expansions of greater than 150 square feet for ADU conversions. In addition to an existing accessory structure and convert the ADU at a later time, which will qualify as an exempt ADU. So we're seeing people come in and want to take advantage of, you know, adding on, converting an existing garage, say, and adding on 150 square feet. And then, and then trying to find an exemption for, as an exempt ADU. One of the big ones here, this next bullet, exempt ADUs may be closer to the front property line than the main dwelling. So literally with this state law, you could put an ADU in your front yard. So that raises a whole host of concerns for staff, not the least of which is if you've got a house with a garage and, and, or attached or detached and a driveway and you're dropping down an ADU in the front yard, what about the line of sight when someone's backing out of that driveway? They're going to get hit. There may be some of these neighborhoods where that, that view is completely obstructed. So that's an objective standard. We're, we're going to work with engineering on. Maybe we could have some line of sight triangles so that we could show that you have to meet that. We don't have to like it, but if you want to do it, you still have to meet a line of sight triangle. So that we're not creating traffic collisions, you know, or allowing for that to happen. So that's, that's a big concern. There's also requests to legalize unpermitted garage conversions that were built before 2020. Their state has an amnesty program that we're starting to figure out and we're trying to deal with where it effectively gives folks that converted, say, a garage into an ADU without permits, five years to legalize those. And under typical code enforcement cases, nobody gets five years to do that. But the state is saying in this case, yes. So city standards to consider. Increased height allowance, by that I mean height restrictions, elimination of, or, or I should say imposition of a parking requirement where we can as an objective standard. Single-story limitation, ADU conversions. Allow ADU conversion additions beyond 150 square feet, but apply minimum setback to the, to the expanded area. So let's say the standard setback is five feet. You can't build it four feet. You have to meet that minimum standard. Only allow additions greater than 150 square feet if the entire ADU can meet all the development standards for setbacks, height, parking, open space. Covenants to limit, limit future expansion for ADU conversions. And we're recommending minimum distance between structures, six feet, would be something that we would look at. Other standards to consider, just highlight. Other standards to consider, just highlight here, I touched on them earlier. Objective standards, they've got to be objective. Front door orientation. So you, you don't want, if it's an ADU in the backyard, you don't want the door necessarily facing the street. Screening of exterior stairs. Landscapes, specific types and quantities of plants and trees. Step back if, if it's the desire to allow for a second story. We would ask that the second story be setback further than the primary first floor unit. So if it's at four feet, the second story would have to be at eight feet or ten feet. So you could get a little more privacy. One of the things we're looking at is opaque windows on the second level. We will carefully look at window placement. So you don't get somebody's bathroom window lining up with or looking down on the neighbor's house and their family room in the backyard. Minimum and maximum window size could be objective standards. Lighting, want to be careful about that. We get some complaints about light and glare on occasion. So we don't want these things contributing to that. Also allow specific materials that must be used for exterior finish. And lastly, building articulation. In other words, we want to encourage better design. We don't want boxes just built in the backyard. Other standards to consider would be limiting encroachment of accessory structures and none, other non habitable structures like sheds, garages within the setbacks. Reduce potential conversion of a larger ADU that's less than four feet from a property line. We have a lot of these garages that are built at three feet or some cases even less than that to the property line. And it poses a number of issues for fire, life, safety. Patio covers, removing patio covers as an allowable encroachment in the rear yard open space. As I said earlier, lot coverage and floor area requirements would be applied if, if we get that direction. And that would be citywide. It wouldn't just be in response to this ADU. And then, of course, I touched on line of sight. Talked about the open space requirement. It's currently at five hundred square feet. It also, the current code allows pools and patio covers within the required rear yard open space, which it, to me, it diminishes the, the point of the open space. It could be recreational space, but the point of open space is to have some respite, some landscaped area ideally for privacy. So one of the things that we've implemented since I've been here and, and we're still working on it. It's a work in progress, but the departments have really been working with us to better coordinate our intra departmental review of these applications. A lot of times, unfortunately, we've had ADUs that will get placed into easement areas. And either the owner didn't know there was an easement, say, in their backyard, a sewer easement, or they didn't tell us, or we didn't make them disclose what they knew about it. So we're dealing with a number of those issues, but we're working much better with the different departments. But we've had a, a number of working sessions with the various departments, including the utilities. Edison, SoCal Gas, LA County Fire, we've looped in. The sanitation district, our intent here with these list of utilities is to start to talk to them to get to a point where we're going to, I think we're going to get to a point where there's a cumulative impact associated with some of these units. And at what point do we get to that tipping point? At what point is the sewer capacity already exceeded and then dropping that one more ADU in? You know, so those are things that we're taking into consideration, not as obstacles or impediments to block the construction. It's just to better manage the construction to make sure we limit the impacts on the city's infrastructure. So lastly, and thank you for your patience with this. We did present this to the planning commission on October 23rd. They're supportive of increasing affordable housing options. We all are. But like, no surprise, concerned about loss of privacy due to reduced setbacks mandated by the state. Diminished off street parking. So they're, they're concerned about the loss of parking and the loss of neighborhood architecture. A lot of these are designed with little to no thought as to how they're going to match the front unit. So the next steps would be to gather your input and feedback here tonight. We would then come back with a draft ordinance with the standards. Is objective and is, but as strict as we can, depending on your feedback, that will still keep us in compliance with state law. And this, this concludes my presentation and be more than happy to answer any questions. I want to thank you for your patience on it. It's been a topic that's been long in the making, so it's, it's time.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a lot of information and I've been getting, and I know we've been getting a lot of questions about what's the new regulations on ADUs and this and that, what have you. So I, I really thank you for this information. Is there any way that we could get the presentation? Because I know we have the, the packet agenda item and it has sort of that info, but not as concise and, you know, given the visuals. So if that could be made available to us, that would be great.
Absolutely. I want to be careful when we talk about objective standards because it's something that we're working on with staff.
Yeah, these are not set in stone, of course.
No, they're not, but absolutely.
Because there's changes or what have you, but just to get an idea. That would be great.
Yeah, the PowerPoint presentation version.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I think, um, what I'm thinking is the same thing like previous items. It's, we want to have the most conservative approach to as possible. At the same time, I know people that not even have, live in Norwalk, but of people that have built ADUs or pulled applications and maybe decided not to do it. Because typically, from what I, from the people I talked to, is these ADUs end up being a lot more expensive than they anticipated. Because I was talking to a friend the other day and I think he ended up for an ADU on his property. It ended up costing him like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or something. And so I can see why there's a lot of applications. And then it's, there was a falloff along the way. But I think we gotta have the most conservative approach because the reality is that people have the right to build them. They've given, been given the legal right to build them. And I don't want to take away people's rights and say, no, you can't do this. When obviously they have the legal right to do it. I just want to make sure that our approach is conservative enough that it covers everybody. The ADU builder, the city, the neighbors. Because this is all, has a safety component involved. And a lot of these things, you know, we have a lot of neighbor on neighbor issues going on in town all the time, all the time. Over barking dogs and parking, everything else. You increase the density like this and the probability that stuff's going to happen like that just increases big time. And just out of curiosity, I didn't see in your presentation, which we said waste management on there made me think. Now, I have, you know, I have three trashcans as we all do in Norwalk and they're pretty big. So if you have one lot and you have primary house or whatever, and anyway, there's, there's four dwellings on it, right? That's twelve trashcans. Do you realize how much space twelve Norwalk trashcans would take? So is there a requirement in there about, about trashcan storage? Because as you know, we have an orange camp, leave trashcans out or be exposing. If you had that many units on one piece of property. I, I don't know where, it's a bizarre thing, but I don't, I don't know where you put all those trashcans. Where they wouldn't be visible from the street.
Mayor, that's, that's a very good point. That's something we can look into then, and that's a real impact. Because typically, you know, in commercial developments, you'd require those things be screened.
Bang closures and screens.
Yes, absolutely. We could certainly look into, that's why I mentioned the, about the coordination with the different utilities. How key that is because some of the utilities may not even be aware of the scope of this. You know, the, what we're dealing with in Norwalk. I know Edison is because they've had to deal with several issues with easement conflicts, but we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, would you?
Yeah.
Because I have three trashcans and it takes up like, you know, half the side of my house and the little section between the fence and the house. I mean, they're big.
And Mayor, if, if I may, just one other example. We had a multifamily example that I think highlights the challenges. It's over on Kalnor and it's a three hundred foot deep lot. It's a little bit less than fifty feet wide. It has two units that go back to the sixties, the front unit and a back unit with a parking in between. This individual came in to propose ADUs in the onsite parking, surface parking between the units. And something didn't even, I had to reach out to fire and I said, wait a minute, you're three hundred feet. It's a three hundred foot deep lot. You've got the back unit and you're adding four more units. So are you going to be able to get a hose back there? So we're doing more to coordinate with fire. I know we're, we're trying to strike a balance that to Vice Mayor's point about we're, we're trying to encourage reinvestment in the properties and we want to encourage people to add on to their homes, want them to grow. But in this case, this multifamily case, this was not a mom and pop operation. This was not a mom and pop, you know, this was their retirement income. They needed the units. It was an out of town investor and I don't want to demonize that, but that's the reality. There's a lot of investment being made in ADUs by people that are not necessarily going to live in them. They're going to rent them. And a property owner, I think, should have the right to do that, but somebody who's just picking up property and then maximizing it. That's, that's what we see.
And then leaves us with problems, like I said, with law enforcement, infrastructure and everything else, you know, so they benefit. And they have the right to, but it's also a cost to us. So how are we going to recover that cost? Right? It's can't, can't do it for nothing. Any comments, questions to counsel?
I did have one additional comment, other than B is tight on this policy, just like the other one. You brought up historical districts. And, and in our city, I don't think we have anything designated historical district. So I'd be really interested to find out what takes a, what, what constitutes a historical district? Is it something where we can look at the Hargit House and the surrounding homes in that area as historical district? Can we look at Patterson Farm and the houses in around there? Can we look at radius around Front Street, the heart of Norwalk, et cetera? What actually constitutes a historical district and what do we need to do to look at solidifying that? And not to make it, you know, let's just make all of the city of Norwalk historical district and then we don't have to, you know, look at this. But is that one way where we can look at specific areas in our city that have historical landmarks to us to make that a case for, for ADUs in, in addition to that particular neighborhood? The other thing I would look at is can the horse properties that are, I mean, can they be listed as historical district? That's not heard of in a lot of our cities anymore. And with the, the animals and the lot size and everything, like you said, not every single homeowner that lives on one of those lots actually has animals. But maybe that's something where we can say, put in the code that if there is something there, then you have to take this into consideration.
Sure, we can, we can look into that and report back on that.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, there's no other questions. I guess this is a receiving file as well, basically. I thought, or you got pretty much the direction, I think, that you need to give the last two items, correct?
Yes.
All right. Trista, do you have any speaker cards for oral communications? Two? Yeah, I think Brian Tisdale. Oh, he's there. I thought you left. Okay, Brian, come on up.
Good evening, council and staff again. I was just going to tell you the landscaping standards for the parkways for residential includes five species of plants that you are allowed to plant without having to get a permit or any fees incurred. None of those are natives and two of them are toxic. I only started caring about plants and trees and stuff because I was in Monrovia and we're nowhere close, they were nowhere close to the ocean. We are in a coastal zone here. When I buy plants, apparently we're in a coastal zone. I'm completely obsessed with the ocean. If you think my tree and plant knowledge is impressive, you'd be disturbed. There are twenty-five thousand barrels of DDT that are dumped off the coast of Catalina. That was dumped in the nineteen thirties and forties. DDT is the toxic chemical that was a pesticide that almost caused the extinction of the California condor and killed so many birds and so it was banned. Recently, I think within the last year or so, they found all these barrels. So there are twenty-five thousand barrels of toxic pesticides in the ocean off of the coast of Catalina, where I go scuba diving. We in this room and you can do nothing about that. So that's why I come to talk to you guys about environmental issues that we can do something about, which is trees and plants and concrete and medians. So I know it's very repetitive and very boring, but that's why I don't come here and talk to you about stuff that we can't accomplish. I try and bring smaller things that we can to make the city better and to improve the environment in ways that we can accomplish. So if anybody wants to go scuba diving or talk about sharks, I'm always available. So, thank you.
Okay. And our next speaker is Gabriel. Peralas.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Gabriel Peralas, the United States Small Business Administration. And I'm here this evening really to bring some delight in hopes of getting collaboration with the city of Norwalk. I arrived about two months ago from Texas to the wildfires that are going on in Eden in, in support of the wildfire survivors. And as we've been present for the last two months at these, at these sites, at community functions, community organizations. It's been, it's been brought to my attention that a lot of the survivors have actually scattered throughout the areas, different areas as they look for shelter and housing. And a couple of the cities names that I, I found to hear over and over, one of them was Norwalk. And so what I wanted to do was basically bring to, to the attention of, of you all that there's possibility that there might be some displaced families, some displaced, you know, people that were running businesses out of the affected areas. And while they're staying with maybe say friends or family, might not be fully aware of all the resources that are available to them. Because as we're having the functions on a regular basis in Eltadena and Pasadena, well, they're possibly over here and not really over there getting the information that we're delivering on a daily basis to affected, affected survivors. So really my, my number one goal is to share with you that up until March thirty first, the Small Business Administration has resources available for homeowners who were affected by the wildfires. We're talking about either replacement or repairing of their homes with loans of up to five hundred thousand dollars at a low two and a half percent interest over the course of thirty years with twelve months, no payment and no interest. So it is my responsibility over the course of the next couple of months to be in Norwalk and the surrounding areas to not only be visible and be present with you all and, and some of your, some of your members from, from your community. But to share and deliver the information that is valuable, that can maybe help someone, whether it's one person, five people, ten people or a hundred. If there is somebody that is a survivor here in the Norwalk area, I certainly want to be present and visible and, and aspire to, to do so through your community events, through ongoing meetings with some of your city members, as I've already met a few of them. And so I certainly ask and encourage you if there's any, anything that I can do from my end to maybe get some of our information out through your means. I would absolutely appreciate your, your help and your cooperation. And in the meantime, again, I aspire to just be a, a visible presence within the community as long as, as BA needs me here. And one thing to keep in mind, it's not only LA County, it's the four contiguous counties of Orange Kern, San Bernardino and Ventura. Where we offer resources as we believe that's where some of the wildfire survivors may be. So I thank you for your time and I look forward to hopefully gaining your cooperation and disseminating this information.
Levy, could you get his contact information and? Oh, you already did? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I guess we're adjourned, folks. Yeah, remembering that we're closing this meeting in the, in honor of memory of.
We're reconvening at a closed session.
The, we are reconvening to close session, enter closed session. we are reconvening to a lower session, into closed session.
Yep. We'll be going back in the closed session, the mayor. Thank you.